So I was constantly on the phone with the county clerk in both counties.
You're good.
Reviewing if you want to vote early or if you need to vote.
I call to order the October 6th, 2022 Committee of the whole meeting of the Board of Education of Hinsdale Township High School District 86. We are meeting in the Hinsdale South Library and the time is 5:32 PM. Deb, would you please call the board?
Member Helm?
Here.
Member Hurstman. Member Walker?
Here.
Member Hanson?
Here.
Member James?
Here.
Member Leventhal?
Here.
Member Waters?
Here.
And as communicated to us, Kathleen is teaching a class tonight. We had to reschedule this meeting due to some conflicts next week, so she's unable to attend. She says hi to everybody. Please stand if you're able to join me in reciting the Fledge of Allegiance. The Fledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So it's another exciting night here. We have a tour to start off the board meetings. We are going to be taking a brief tour of central spaces at Hinsdale South here that were renovated in conjunction with the districts which are ready for series planning. While on this tour, the board will return to the library, proceed with our meeting agenda. And a quick note on that agenda, Good News and D86 Defining Excellence Presentations are going to appear early on our agenda here to allow students and staff contributing with these presentations to exit the meeting early to attend the annual Hornets Scholars Awards Ceremony. Members of the public are on course invited and welcome to take part in this tour. Please note, the tour will not be livestreamed or recorded.
Thank you. At this time, Principal Hardy is going to give the board and on the rest cabinet a tour of our building.
Who would you like us to start from?
We'll start right here. I was just waiting for him to pause. I didn't want to walk in front of the livestream. Big shiny ball here.
We're going to resume our meeting here after that great tour and slight diversion to take a look at the bus turnaround. That's the only reason why we were outside. So right now, we're going to continue on with Good News. We're going to turn over to our principals and our student liaisons.
Hi, everyone. So September was a month full of school spirit, athletic achievement, and back-to-school adjustments for Red Devils. On Friday, September 16th, students excitedly returned to indoor pep rallies to do performances by the bands, pomps, cheerleaders, color guards, and discover this year's homecoming parade. In the week that followed, the varsity club and student council launched a series of activities and dress days to build school spirit in anticipation of the dance. At the end of the second pep rally on September 23rd, this year's homecoming royalty Amelia Nickel-Lachlan and Emily Pope were crowned. On Saturday, the day of Central's Homecoming Dance, clubs and sports decorated and designed floats and signs for their homecoming parade. Cheerleading Football, Tennis, Lag Club, Ambassador Club, LGBTQ Student Alliance, Varsity Club, and Care Club are all organizations represented in the parade. A freshman told me Homecoming Week was an awesome introduction to high school, and they can't wait for the next four years. The morning of Homecoming, the Girls Cause Country Chum traveled to J. Spohill, Wisconsin for the Midwest Invitational. Central placed second out of 39 teams with senior Sarah Fisher placing first in the 5K and then rocking it at the dance just a few hours later. Hinsdale Central Boys Golf and Girls Golf are both conference and regional champions. Both teams are motivated about the road to state, and coaches can tell that they're going to have a very successful run. Hinsdale Central is also proud of the 30 senior Red Devils named 2023 National Merit semifinalists and 71 seniors named National Merit Commended Students. The incident and controlled dismissal on September 28th was scary for substudents. One kid told me that after the incident, they were glad that District 86 takes that seriously and makes an effort to ensure safety for students and staff. The Student Boys Committee is working with social and emotional learning coaches to aid student mental health with Red Devil Reflections coming next week. A member of the committee told me that they are motivated to expand upon reflections with student feedback from last year. September was Suicide Prevention Month, and students are working to end the stigma around mental health. At lunches on September 27th, students sign their names on lighthouses that are being placed around the school to show students in need that there are people they can talk to and trust. All in all, Central's first month back has been a success, and I look forward to the upcoming fall events.
Hello, everyone. I'm going to be talking about South's first week, first month of student feedback. As we were pleased to touch on diversity, one of South's greatest strengths, these past few weeks, we have been celebrating Hispanic Heritage Month. As a portion of our student body comes from a Hispanic background, it is important that we draw attention to their contributions and affirm their belonging in our building. Our celebrations have included a playlist of cultural music created by students that has been played during passing periods, in addition to selling uolte and other special foods and drinks at lunch that are served by Chef Ten. All food items have included a flyer to learn about Hispanic culture. We will continue to celebrate selling churros and T-shirts in the upcoming weeks. Our Amnesty International Club has hosted a supply drive where all of the donated items will be delivered to the Chicago City Council Latino caucus and benefit the asylum seekers who have arrived in the Chicagoland area in recent weeks. One member of the club has told me they've had an extreme amount of success, receiving everything from cash to suitcases and clothes to everything art supply club. Furthermore, last week, South had a huge success raising money for the Wounded Warriors Foundation, as we raised over $1,100. One is for Wounded Warriors Selective New Charity this year, the Midwest Shelter for the Homeless Veterans, which offers a variety of services for veterans who are acclimating to civilian life after their service and are facing various obstacles in doing so. Students sold shirts and collected donations during lunch, as well as collected donations from the crowd at the DGS game last Friday. Thank you to all the DGS and Hinsdale South fans for contributing to this. In other news, this past month and continuing throughout this week, we have had a ton of students to celebrate here at South, the first being Tommy Neiser for winning seventh place in the Boys Golf 2A IHSA Regional, 10th place in sectional, and who played tonight, actually, at state. Congratulations, Tommy. We are super proud of you. Next up, we've been celebrating our Fall Athletes with Senior Night, beginning with both girls and boys golf. Last week, we celebrated our swim, volleyball, and tennis girls, in addition to our football team, cheerleaders, dancers, band, and flagstaff seniors on Friday night. Each junior has received a banner and walkouts from friends, family, and teachers. We are looking forward to cheering on the girls' dynasty in the conference this upcoming week, as well as our volleyball team and their annual volleyball career against Hinsdale Central in the upcoming weeks. Tonight, we will be celebrating our 462 Hornets Scholars who have earned this achievement by receiving good grades from the past school year. Upon submitting my report, excuse me, I've actually received word about our seniors who will be put on Hinsdale South's Wall of Fame, as you might have noticed when walking into the building tonight. Please help me in congratulating Amelia Hoek, Marian Bolini, Fatima Kourischi, Jamila Nadine Book, Anastasia Golinsky, Dimitri Briyanich, Arian Patel, Diego Castellanos, Nathan Reddy, Zachary Carter, and Sammy Alguadari for taking and passing at minimum six AP classes their junior year. Additionally, I'd like to give an extra shout out to South's very own National Merit Scholar honorees, including Dimitri Briyanich for receiving the recognition of National Merit Scholar semifinalist. Out of the 16,000 students nationally who are also receiving this honor, we are extremely pleased to have one at the hive. Moving forward, we are looking forward to, one, the upcoming Red Ribbon Week, and, two, next week's Homecoming. Homecoming Spirit Week will kick off next week, and will also feature department hallway contests for students that will vote, celebratory items at lunch, and the dance eventually on Saturday night. We are extremely excited for all of this, and that's what's been going on at South for the past month. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have any questions for our liaison? All right. Thank you very much. Any other comments? All right. We're going to be moving on towards to Agenda Item 3, which is D86 Forward: Defining Excellence, the Program of Studies for the 2023-2024 School Year. And so the board will now conduct a first reading of the district's unified, it's important to note, unified program studies. This right here, the board members will provide with, this is the program of studies. This is not Central's. This is not South's. This is D86. That's a huge accomplishment that cannot be underscored enough. The creation of this document is a major initiative that's being completed in conjunction with Goal 1, student growth and achievement of the strategic plan. Now I'll turn over to Superintendent President.
Thank you, President Helm. At this time, we have up to two presentation folders who want, and I believe are back to the original order. Is that correct, Ms. Beano?
Yes.
Yes. All right. So shortly, you're going to hear from a variety of individuals who've been working hard on the program piece around the Department of Special Ed, and then we'll also be hearing from the math department. Ms. Beano?
Yes. While we are in the same order, we have a few guest speakers because a few are departing to this wonderful ceremony at the Almahal. So thank you, board, for the opportunity to discuss the program of studies tonight. This is a first reading, meaning just another name for first draft. So we have been working over the last three years to get to the point that we are at right now. And what you see on the screen in front of you is a section, it's obviously on the left side of the screen as well, of our strategic plan. I've highlighted three areas that were central to our discussions and to the planning for a single program of studies, the most important of which really is the first one, the idea of a coherent system, a system that we can count on, a system where we can expect very specific outcomes, and a system that has alignment. So again, part of sort of common, high, and valued expectations by all. The program of studies that is in front of you for this reading and for your consideration is been a work in progress, at least coming together over the last few years. Some of the items and the bullet points on the screen in front of you, you are very familiar with because everyone on this board was part of them, some not. So just very quickly, prior to the strategic plan, we did have, up until this year, two separate programs of studies that listed all of the courses available in each individual building. While there was some coherence, it lacked enough so that we engaged in this project to get to where we are today. The goal was an aligned D86 curriculum and Common Program of Studies by 2024. That is put and pushed back just slightly due to the delays that we've discussed, but we have a document that we are going to use now in common to guide the remainder of that work. In school year 2021, we had ongoing math and science curriculum sequence revisions, development, curriculum writing and work program teams started in all content areas during that school year. In last school year, we had the math sequence return to a traditional sequence, and with the new courses added and work being done there. Science, for the first time, offering two sequences on both campuses with all new courses adopted. And then, of course, the program team work and recommendations from the areas discussed in 2021, in the areas of English, Social Studies, Fine Arts, CTE, PhD Languages, all implemented as far as the curriculum development and writing work was concerned. This was the work that was memorialized in the 2223 Program of Studies, which we're operating with currently. And then, well, one more thing, and it's really important because that's what this part of this is about, that last bullet point, the program team work started by the Special Education Department. And everyone at the table to my left is a part of that work and really led that work. The one person that I may have to punt for here is Eric Martsov, who was the Assistant Principal for Instruction, who was leading that work, who apparently is now leading a presentation down the hall. So I'm going to do my very best without doing any impressions. Right, next slide. School year 2324 Program of Studies update. So here are just a few things. One of the things that we wanted to do with this Common Program of Studies, because it encompasses all that we do and is a great guide for parents and community members to understand what students are doing here in the building, is we wanted greater curriculum transparency in the program of studies itself. So it's a little bit disingenuous to have printed out this program of studies for you and sitting in front of you, although I wanted it so that you could sort of mark it up or do what you'd like with it. But if, when you, in your, I'm sorry, attached to the public-facing side of board docs is a live link PDF of this first reading draft. You will see, if you click on examples of the linked sections in the program of studies, you'll see what we call District Course Overview Documents. The idea was that as teams met together across the district and established common outcomes, now, when we call something aligned, we have, you know, a variety of common outcomes. These are just two examples, Latin 1 and Criminal Law, two different courses. And if you ever, if you click on those, you will see course descriptions that are common, resources, standards, units of study, grading practices, et cetera, all within a single document. This is a document that helps guide that curriculum work as the teams are working. They record their work there, and then it becomes a public-facing document. So if you ever ask yourself the question, I wonder what they do in that course outside of the two sentences that are in the program of studies, a click on there provides a transparency about what units are there, how their grading practices operate, what resources may be used within the course, and how they'll sort of align together. Another piece here is a single link to a Common Course Fee and Materials document. In the past, these were all listed under each different course, and they were different across the district in some places. That document is currently being worked on. It's at the header of each of our areas, so underneath English, underneath Social Studies, but it does say, if you click on it, under instruction, or will appear by around December. And that's something that we're still currently working on. But the plan is to have something in place prior to course selection for students who are in the building. One other thing that you'll see, the last two bullet points are kind of part of the same thing. You're going to see underneath some courses, a notation for final alignment. And in the past, we had a color-coded chart that showed what was available at Central and what was available at South, and what was in common, and how many years it was going to take to get there. Well, we are to the point now where we can have a Common Program of Studies where we still have notations, like the one I snipped out and put in this slide, that says World Studies Honors, HS only, so Hinsdale South only, anticipated alignment 2425, right? And then directly underneath it, you see the Hinsdale Central version of the same course that has a different name and different, and the two pieces that are working together during this school year and next, so that in the 2425 school year, we have an aligned course. So that team actually, that team met today to start some of that work. So you're going to see those throughout the Program of Studies where we are not yet aligned, but the progress towards alignment is significant. Last year, there were 87 courses unique to Hinsdale Central and 27 unique to Hinsdale South. This year, there are 30 unique to Central and 13 to South, a significant decrease, right, because of the work that has been done over the last 18 months, right? And you'll see where those pieces fit in inside the individual departments. Next slide. So these are just some of the pieces just laid out for everyone to see. Retired, replaced courses on the left. You'll see a lot of those repeated in some way, shape, or form on the right, as we had courses that took their place that were aligned. So where you see Drawing and Design, it's a retired course, but a lot of Drawing and Design went into Drawing and Painting 1, 2, and 3 in the various different levels. You see our two new English courses, so we're doing two a year. We had two this year, two next year. Sophomore PE actually completes the full 100% alignment of PE in both buildings. It's our first department to be there. That's not true, ELL is, but it's only three courses, and it's only offered at Hinsdale Central currently, so it's a little bit of a, again, a false indicator. But PE is. And then what you see in the bottom-left-hand corner is really what we're going to talk about a lot in our next presentation. And rather than just aligned courses, this is an aligned sequence, a sequence in the area of Special Education. So you're going to hear about what PREP is. It's an acronym. I won't bury the lead, or I guess I am burying the lead, and then our foundations courses as well, which they'll be talking about. Next. Last but not least, our discussion currently is that our Earned Honors Credit pilot could continue to include like courses for the next year. This is not something that we're set on. It is true to full, you know, honesty here. We have not collected a whole heck of a lot of data on the courses yet because they've only been in session for about a month, right? But when we originally talked about Earned Honors Credit, we talked about offering it in areas where we weren't going to have standalone honors courses because they either didn't exist, weren't going to exist, or because the size of the individual buildings was hard to have multiple levels and also fill them. So Earned Honors Credit, in addition to being primarily a place where students who really never had the opportunity before to challenge themselves with honors coursework, right, also has a practical piece to it as well, right? So the design was also always going to be, as we stated a year and a half ago, right, that the English courses were, as we rolled them out, all six of them, right, were going to be Earned Honors courses, right? So that is what we're talking about right now. That's what's in this first draft. But that is also feedback that we are very open to thinking about not expanding those pieces at this point in time, right? So we would want some of that feedback. We do have a community conversation and PTAC meetings scheduled to talk about the Earned Honors Pilot in March, after the first semester is complete, and we can really pull some of that data. But in my conversation with department chairs over the last week, just thinking about this presentation, they are indicating that a good majority, 50% to 75% of all students are attempting the honors work, some, most of it done successfully, right, in those classes, specifically in art classes and in the business, Intro to Business class. And they're finding that they're not having to make any significant revisions to curriculum instruction or assessment, other than to provide students the rationale and for what they're shooting for at a higher level, right? And that's part of what the research says about, about just sort of acceleration and just enrichment in general, is that when you set high goals, students reach for them, right? And that's one of the things that this pilot is exploring and will be collecting more data about. No, not yet. Sorry. Okay. POS work that is ongoing. Special Program Team and Recommendations presented to, were presented to the community, to PTAC, and tonight to the Board of Education. That work will continue in course development and course writing over the course of the next year. We have a digital program of studies under construction with school links. Our target for Board of Ed and community feedback is going to be early winter at this point in time. And curriculum development alignment continue in all course areas. Later in this presentation, you're going to see a color-coded chart that talks about Phases 1, 2, 3, and 4 of this entire strategic plan process as we laid it out three years ago, right? Phase 1 is program teamwork. What you'll hear tonight is the end of Phase 1, which is the last program team to do that work and to move into Phase 2 and 3, which are curriculum development, which is really building the skeleton of how courses align with each other freshman year through senior year in a sequence, as well as the writing process, which takes place by individual courses but across district. What I've put on the right side, though, is this orange section, which is Phase 4, and it's where we want to get to. We can call this a whole bunch of things. Right now, just very generally, Phase 4. So when we have aligned coursework in a coherent system with data-informed instruction, acceleration, intervention, PD planning, right, that forms the foundation for continuous improvement. And that orange section is about what we do when we are continuously improving. When we get to the point where we have aligned courses with aligned outcomes and several common assessments where we can look at the data to figure out what our gaps are, what students need more support, what students can accelerate, that's when we're really in a smart place as a school district, right? And that's where we're getting to through this alignment process. All right. Next slide. I should probably look at this presentation and see what Eric was going to do. This is you. I'm going to turn it over to my distinguished colleague, Dr. Smith.
Thank you. So if you go back to the previous slide, that is just our terms. So if you wanted to take a moment to scan that so you know that when we start talking about some of these acronyms, that you know what they are, we wanted to put that up there for you. So that's what this slide is for. So we can go to the next slide, or are you still? Are we good? Okay. All right. So then these are the program team members, and so some of them are here this evening to present, so we just wanted to share that with you. So we'll go to the next one.
You've seen this picture before. This talks about our process. We've highlighted Phase 1 because that's what we're going to discuss today. So the remainder of this presentation is really about the most, the changes that we need to highlight because they are curricular changes and sequence changes for our policies, and just because we want to be transparent about the work that's going on, right? So the strategic plan directs us to look at alignment, and we are now in the process that we use to look at sequence alignment across this department, which is Special Education. I just referred a slide earlier to, one more key, to this sequence. So we are finishing Number 1, on the blue one on the left side, and moving towards green and pinkish-purple with this Special Education team. So what you're going to see the rest of the night is the work of the program team, and then we have a single math course to present as a recommendation to add to the math courses. Other than that, all work in this program of studies has already been presented and is in the current program of studies. Slide.
So the information here is from our September 13th community conversation. So these were some of the questions that we received, and then we also wanted to include some of the questions that we received from the September 27th PTAC meeting. So we have those up there for your reference. One of the things, we'll go to the next slide, we wanted to just kind of talk about the difference between an IEP and a 504 that seemed to come up pretty frequently. And so I'm not going to read it to you, but basically, an IEP is a plan. It's, you know, students are legally entitled to the services that they receive. There's specialized supports and services that are provided to students with IEPs. When we're talking about a 504, it's also a plan. It's accommodations, really, to help students access that curriculum. So there's different ways that students can qualify. There's evaluations for both of them, and then a team comes together and meets and talks about what a student needs, whether it's the specialized services or whether it's accommodations. So we wanted to make sure that we included that just for some reference for you all. So we'll go to the next slide, and this is going to be Ms. Stomberg, who is our Assistant Director over at South.
Good evening. Nice to see everyone. So this is kind of the cadence and the process that we use, starting last December. So as Chris mentioned before, on the right-hand side, we're just getting ready to close out our Phase 1. We started with, starting our mission, and then we did what's called a SWOT analysis, which really is a discussion of our strengths, our weaknesses, our opportunities, and our threats within the Special Education program in our district. In January, we went to drafting a mission statement for Special Education. We then progressed in February, as you can see, drafting goals related to the strategic plan. I will be sharing those in the next slide, along with the KPIs that we identified. In March and April, we researched various peer districts. We went through about 10 different districts, came back together and discussed them. I just briefly put down a list of the districts Glenbard, Glenbrook, Naperville, Willowbrook, Lockport, Lyons Township, Lamont, Lyden, Stevenson, and Nutria. Those were all the school districts that we compared ourselves to in our analysis. We came back to our group, we reviewed all of those districts, and then we also consulted with the department chairs in math and English. They came to our program team. We got to talk to them a lot about their work so far in their Phase 1 and the continued work of the program of studies. Then we went through, in May, we collected feedback from our departments and then all of our teachers and related services within Special Education about our mission statement, about our presentation, about all these things that we had collected all of our data in regards to. We then presented to everything, we administered the survey, and then shared that feedback as well. This summer, we aligned, or we started developing our set course teams, which we'll talk a little bit more about further in the presentation. If you want to go to the next slide, we'll talk about our first goal and key performance indicators. So our first goal is Goal 1, Strategy 1, alignment, and how we're going to measure our success. And so potential key performance indicators could be, we're hoping aligned course fees, syllabus, an online program of studies. We'd like to see a criteria and flow chart outlining all of our courses and all of our programming. Our hope is we will modify directly from the general education curriculum that our partners are working on, and we will have common teachers between co-taught gen ed courses and our self-contained instructional-level Special Education courses to strengthen that content and knowledge. So that's our first goal that we identified in strategy. If you want to go to the next slide, which focuses on our social and emotional skills that we really thought were very important when it comes to planning for students that have disabilities. So we're hoping that we can identify and measure our success by our students utilizing those social-emotional strategies that they will learn, using those independently, and then also that students are engaging in progress monitoring themselves, so identifying if they've met their goals or not, and making new goals in regards to those social-emotional learning standards. Our next and final goal and strategy that our team chose was Goal 1, Strategy 3, which really is career and life readiness, if you want to go to the next slide. If you're familiar with Special Education, or if you're not, we'll explain a little bit more, but that is kind of the meat of our plans, is what are you going to do as an adult when you exit services in your life? What are your lifelong goals in regards to education or training, employment, and independent learning skills? And so we want our students to not And so, we want our students to not just participate in the curriculums that we are able to find and create and work with, but we also want them to create their goals, understand their disability, understand how to advocate for themselves. It's a really big part of students accessing and advocating for the lifelong. We're hoping that they can see how their data change, changes over time, and then they can understand what they're ready for in regards to their career and their college choices. We can go to the next slide, and I'll turn it over to Andrea Alexson, Director of Special Education at Central.
Hi, everyone. I'm Andrea Alexson, Director of Special Education at Central. Nice to see you all. So I'm gonna be touching on some key points that both Ms. Stenberg and Dr. Cavino, Dr. Smith spoke of. So our mission statement is posted currently, and so like Ms. Stenberg had mentioned, this took quite some time because we wanted to ensure that all voices were heard. We sent out the mission statement various times to ensure all stakeholders within our departments, related service providers, everybody, you know, felt comfortable with the mission and that we were all united within all the buildings. So the mission of District 86 Special Education Department is to foster an equitable and accessible educational environment. By working collaboratively with students, parents, staff, and the community, we will provide curricula and instruction to ensure students will self-advocate and achieve goals in post-secondary education, employment, training, and independent living. Slide. Thank you. So as we went through this, a lot of the conversations, especially through those SWOT analysis portion, was what are the things that we're doing really well, and what do we want to continue to have here within special ed across the board in the district? So we want to ensure that the IEP teams always remain the team, and that's the team that makes the recommendations, the course recommendations for all things for that student individually. We are committed to a least restrictive environment. So not just, like with the IEP team, it's not a one person determines this, it's a team decision. And also, that team is responsible for ensuring that a student is not undersupervised or oversupervised, that they're in the right placement. We also want to ensure that the student voice is at the forefront. We want to make sure that their voice and their future is at the center of the IEP meetings. And the way that we do that is through, like what Ms. Stenberg was talking about, through a transition plan. We do student interviews and questionnaires, as well as parent interviews and questionnaires. So we're really tying in that post-secondary piece for ensuring that our students are career and college and career-ready. Another important part to mention is through the student voice piece, that's part of our strategic goal number two, or our strategic plan goal number two, strategy five. And so we're really tying in a lot of pieces so that the students are part of this IEP. So that's something we want to continue to ensure as well. We also want to continue to ensure that we're utilizing the same co-teaching methods, philosophies, and practices within our general education classrooms, and then maintaining the support courses for students with IEPs. And so that's ensuring that we provide our students a continuum of services to make sure that we're, we're meeting our students' needs. When we look at the right-hand side, recommendations based on the program, program team, we have been doing work to align courses in the PREP. So as Dr. Cavino mentioned, that we would speak of PREP. PREP is acronym. It stands for post-secondary readiness educational pathways. So previously, South had self-contained classes, and they were called Applied, whereas Central had the same courses, and they were called ES. So we, as we go through this curriculum alignment, we want to ensure that we're all on the same page, we have the same common names, same common curriculums. So this is where this name came from, to ensure that we're doing that. We want to ensure that we're utilizing the same common assessments across the board, and that's gonna be through our, our future work, ensuring when we develop the curriculums and the common assessments. Also, we want to, we have aligned some expanded foundations, as well as math courses. So although we aren't presenting necessarily any new courses, because these are all courses that were offered either at Central or at South, and we're ensuring that all students with IEPs have the same opportunities, that they're having the opportunity to have all of these courses in both buildings. So for example, in a previous slide, foundations was listed as us having pre-elected, so that's something we previously had done at Central that's now gonna be offered at South. We are working on alignment in our special ed offerings for resource such as program success and strategies, and also our alignment in our continuum of services, as you guys have also seen with the addition of the Basis program and our other programming. When we work at what we're doing with the gen ed population, this is some outstanding work, like Ms. Stenberg said, it's extremely important because we're allowing our gen ed teachers, as well as our special ed teachers, to collaborate, and that's beneficial on both sides. We're seeing that the gen ed teachers, those content experts, they're providing their knowledge and resources to our teachers in a different way, and then our special education teachers, our LBS1s, are providing those gen ed teachers more knowledge from the special education lens of differentiation, modification, accommodating students. So having that partnership is extremely important because we're sharing traits, right? So we are really offering that level of support to each other while we're working collectively together to create the common curriculums and through the wording stage. So some of the work that we have done, the course development and writing teams in math algebra was done in '21 and '22, and this year geometry is taking place, and they're going through that work. The course development and writing teams in English, the junior and senior year options that they went through last school year, English one is taking place currently. And then the course development and writing teams in science, physics was completed in 1920, chemistry was completed in 2021, and biology in '21 and '22. And the course development and writing teams in social studies is taking place this school year. So what that looks like for us in special education is that we're ensuring that our special education teachers are within these program team, the development teams, and the writing teams. So we're ensuring that we're meeting the needs of our students.
Hi, I'm Jane. I'm Al Kehy. I'm a special education teacher here at South in the foundations program, and I'm gonna walk us through our continuum of services in special education. So at the top, on the left side, on the top is general education courses, which includes honors and EP levels. Then the general education co-taught courses, so we have English, math, science, social studies, EVACs, and health. There are asterisks there, Dr. Cavino's gonna discuss a little later. Then new courses are the PREP courses, which like Andrew said, they're not new courses, we've just renamed and aligned these courses between the two buildings, which are self-contained, and they're modified from the general ed curriculum. And then the bottom level is our foundations courses, and they're self-contained and have alternative coursework. Alignment of the courses in PREP, like we said, it stands for post-secondary readiness education pathway sequence. District 86 will align the curriculum of students with services. Also, part of this is our Haven and Base programs. So Haven is the Hinsdale area vision for students with emotional needs, and Basis is building academic and social emotional skills. So both of those are district programs that are housed at Hinsdale South. Hinsdale South District 86 students will be recommended for Haven if they demonstrate the need for additional emotional and behavioral supports that cannot be provided in transition special education or general education setting. Whereas in Basis, Hinsdale South High School District, or Hinsdale School District 86 students will be recommended for Basis if they demonstrate the need for additional academic, emotional, and behavioral supports that cannot be provided in traditional special education or general ed settings. So kind of both of those are district programs but housed here at South.
Keith, if you want to go back real quick. Okay, so the asterisks under general education co-taught courses refers to what's right behind Superintendent Prentice, it says NCAA-approved courses. And one of the biggest differences between our general education classes, which include co-taught courses, and those in the self-contained part of the continuum, which would be the PREP courses and foundations courses, is that to be NCAA-approved, you can go to the next slide now, meaning that it qualifies for a student who wants to play at a Division I or Division II school, right? They have to take a certain number and type of course, and none of those courses can be below grade level. What's on the screen actually is directly from the NCAA site, because these are not District 86 rules by any, by any means. So it just, sometimes that question is asked, and we just want to be really clear that that is one of the key differences between those two course levels and in that, inside that continuum. Slide.
Okay, so we just wanted to provide a summary slide because we shared a lot of information. So if you look up at the slide again, and we, I'm not gonna be repetitive, but I do just wanna kind of point out the different bullets of where those alignment occurred and what courses, and they're listed there. So again, we just wanted to provide a summary just because we know we've shared a lot so far.
Do you want to do a question? Okay. So before we move to the, the math recommendation, which is completely separate from, from this discussion, wanted to give the board an opportunity to ask some questions. Again, what we have in front of you is a first reading, meaning that in three weeks, on the 27th, I think it's three weeks, I'll be bringing back a second reading with a recommendation for adoption, with any changes in directives that have been given or anything from the board level at this point in time. We also have some pieces, now that we had this entire document put in front of our department chairs, where they've caught a few things that they would like to also add. So those will also be added for that second reading, but no substantive changes other than what we may hear from you at this point in time. So we are open to hearing from you and hearing your feedback and suggestions.
So I think that one thing that might, especially for a family that's potentially transitioning from a feeder district, that may be confusing is the PREP courses that are listed on that third to last slide and the foundations courses, they do qualify as graduation requirements, but if your student is potentially going to play baseball in college, they wouldn't qualify as those NC double A, but they still meet the requirements for Illinois' graduation requirements, and our special education kids are graduating with these particular courses.
Yes, thank you. And those are conversations. We do have the transition meetings as we talk about courses, where their student is performing, and also what their future transition plans for post-secondary look like.
And then, in terms of the general education co-taught courses, those could be a grade level course, an honors course, an AP course, depending on the needs of the, that, those special education students that are in that particular section.
So the general education co-taught courses?
The general education co-taught courses, they are not honors or AP courses, they are regular general, general education courses, and they're all the graduation requirements of a student to graduate from District 86.
Okay. I just have a really easy one. You used an acronym of LBS1.
Sure. LBS1 is a learning behavioral specialist, and it's also called the Type 10. It's a certification, K-12, for, like myself, that's my certification, so I can teach special education in a very K-12 grade.
Just a quick question for clarification. I had a few community members reach out since the agenda posted, who were trying to understand better what exactly co-taught is, and I said exactly what it is. I've been through it myself, or one of my students. And I maintain it's about a 20% threshold of students that might be in a co-taught course with, working with the other teacher from time to time. Is that about right? That's what I said, I just wanted to confirm that data point that I shared.
Sure. So I'd have to look up what we call an educational environment code to determine how many students, like what percentage of students are within that educational environment in the gen ed setting for a certain percentage of time. So I would have to get back to you in terms of that percentage of our overall population. That's also rather difficult because we do have students that are in blended programming. So we may have some students that perhaps are in co-taught algebra or math and science, but are in what we are proposing PREP ES, a five-level, let's say, world cultures in English. So it's, it's a program in which we support students, but that doesn't necessarily mean that they're in all co-taught classes. It really depends on what that student's individual needs are.
No, but in the, in the classroom as well, the average co-taught course will have about 20.
Oh, 20 students with special needs.
No, 20, say 20 regular, 4, 70.
70/30.
That was a percentage. They were asking that percentage.
Yes.
So it's 20, so it's 70/30.
Yes, sorry. I'm just kidding.
Okay. So we'll move to the next phase if there are no more questions, but please send us your questions.
I do, I just have one last question about the Basis and Haven program. Those students spend part of their day, you know, in Basis and Haven, and then they're attending classes with the general population of Hinsdale South. Just to be clear, depends on their IEP, they may be within those programs all day. It's student by student.
So I want to offer a huge word of gratitude to all of our members from our special ed program team. The, the folks that are up here right now, if you've been in any of the other meetings, from community conversation to PTAC to even just, you know, chitting them up on, on the street outside of the school during maybe a fire alarm, you, you, you would have heard a lot from, from, from this group. We had a few teachers, though, that gave up their time in each one of the settings. We had, as you saw from that first slide, can I teach her's 10? About a dozen or so teachers from the beginning to the end, and instead of asking them all to come to each meeting, we let them split up. So some of them came to the community conversation, some to PTAC, some tonight, so we just wanted to, to say thank you to our, our team, and before we let you go. But if there's something else, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for being on the session.
I'm looking somewhere behind me at the math table. Otherwise, I'm gonna be a time machine. Okay, so the, the, the math, the department chairs are here with me, Ms. Karen Sangin and Ms. Sarah Farad, who you may have remembered from other math presentations, and they are here once again, and we have one course to talk about tonight. During some of the feedback that we received just a couple of years ago, even when we were talking about making changes, one of the recommendations from a community, community member that really stuck with me was, you know, when, when you're talking about something that, that could, you know, affect the trajectory of a group of students, it's really important to preface with the why and how you're gonna sort of identify students who, who really need a change and what that question is. So we wanted to front this presentation with this slide, which really gives that, that why and asks the question, and that we're trying to solve. Now, this is not just sort of coming out of nowhere, it's, we're trying to solve what could be a problem that is yet unidentified in the lives of, of some students. So our question is, District 86, we have, we have approximately, approximately, each year changes, you know, thinking about trends versus cohorts. Each cohort has somewhere in the neighborhood of 100 freshmen who score very well on their eighth-grade math test. That is above the 80th percentile nationally, even higher than that, and who performed well in eighth-grade Common Core math. Now, in this district, we have a number of students who take algebra and even geometry when they're still in middle school, and that's terrific. But we also have a number of students that come to the district who have just taken eighth-grade Common Core math, right? Maybe they're late bloomers, they weren't identified, I mean, I can tell you from my, my own family's experience, my daughter is right on track, and my son's accelerated, and they made that decision in third grade. That's kind of something that school districts do, right? And then we try and sort of look at, at differences along the way. So sometimes we have late bloomers, which we've discussed in the past, right? And did, students who just did not accelerate in math during middle school or elementary school. So the question we're trying to address is, how do we meet the challenging needs of a freshman in algebra who is ready and wants to accelerate to a higher-level math course while in high school without taking additional courses? who is ready and wants to accelerate to a higher level math course while in high school without taking additional courses outside of the school day, during the summer, blocking classes? Can we meet that student's needs of one of being ready to accelerate? So in District 86, we do not currently in either building offer an honors algebra course. When you come in, you take algebra, right? But when you come in accelerated, you take geometry or geometry honors or even Algebra II, Algebra II honors and and one or two other course options. But over the past six years, there have been approximately 355 students in the district who've taken advantage of one of the ways that we already think about accelerating students, through block class experiences, through summer participation. You're going to hear in about 15 to 20 minutes from our summer school directors who are going to talk about how great the participation in accelerated geometry was over the summer. That is one of those those pieces, right? So this question is really about when students come in, how can we meet the needs of an accelerating student with what we currently have? And the answer is we have a few ways, but we also would like to propose a new one.
Hi, I'm Sarah Prad, math department chair over at Hinsdale Central. So the course we're proposing is Algebra and Geometry Honors. And this is going to be designed for students who have already mastered solving equations and linear functions. There's a lot of overlap with eighth grade standards and Algebra I standards, which we're going to talk about a little bit later in the presentation. So these are students who've already mastered solving linear equations and linear functions. It is going to be a fast-paced course, so we're recognizing that it's it's not going to be for every student. These are for our high achievers that just haven't taken Algebra I yet, but still want to advance. It's going to cover the essential Algebra I and geometry standards. And there's going to be an emphasis on the integration of those those algebra and geometry skills and concepts. This course will fulfill the Algebra I and geometry graduation requirement for students. So we wanted to talk about the the benefits and the challenges of this course. So like Dr. Covino mentioned, we do have acceleration options currently for students who go into Algebra I. Those are to take geometry accelerated over the summer or to block their math classes sophomore year. The problem with that is we are essentially creating barriers for students. It costs a family $600 to have their child take the summer geometry course in order to advance. Or as sophomores, they have to decide between can I take an elective or do I want to excel in my math progression? And that's a hard decision to make when you're, you know, 15 years old. So this would prevent that from happening essentially. We would hopefully kind of catch these students before they get to the point of needing to take summer geometry. We can still keep that as an option, but the hope is that we kind of take that decision out of students' hands by putting them in a class that is a little bit more appropriate for them. The algebra and geometry content would be woven together throughout the course to meet all the essential standards as well as some enrichment standards. It would not be one semester of Algebra I and one semester of geometry. That is not what it would be. It would have to be a blend and an integration of the topics in order to cover everything that we would need to cover.
Like Sarah said. So like Sarah said, there's a lot of linkage between the eighth grade common core and Algebra I. And that's one of the reasons why we can accomplish both of that those curricula in two years because we're picking students very strategically, you know, students that whereas a teacher might normally spend two to three days on a particular topic, this would be the kid that after one, they've got a solid level of understanding and they're ready for more and they're asking for more. They're asking for those enrichments because they are seeking extra knowledge. So by targeting that type of learner who's ready for that and they have a solid foundation to build off of, we can we can condense some of the timeline there. So it's not just taking a year of algebra, a year of geometry and somehow squishing it in and you're not covering it. No, it's it's utilizing the eighth grade experience. And we know our feeders do a great job of preparing our students to come to high school. So using that as a solid foundation to work from, we've cut down the review time. So this slide just illustrates the linkage between these major eighth grade standards and and these Algebra I core units of time. So solving equations, there's just the phrasing of both those. The work with functions, the work with with linear equations, solving systems of linear equations, some statistics, the the bivariate data and to bring those linear models, there's a lot of linkage there. So we don't have to start from scratch. We don't have to review and spend that time reviewing. There's the same linkage in the geometry standards. So this next slide, you'll see the linkage between geometry in eighth grade and also the geometry standards that we would cover in the geometry course in high school. So again, similar similar types of of common threads that we can utilize to our advantage very strategically as we as we develop this course. Other things to note, we can save some time just from the fact that the eighth grade curriculum, that's the last time the kids have seen the geometry, there's not a full year gap of not doing anything geometric. So we can utilize that to our advantage. There's less time that's needed to review because the retention is the previous year, but there's not this extra year in between. And then lastly, like Sarah mentioned, there's a lot of strategic places that we can utilize the algebra and then weave the geometry units together. So again, it's not just here are all the algebra units, here are all the geometry units. No, we'll use the algebra skills because many of them are prerequisites for some of the geometry situations. And then we can intertwine them a lot throughout the entire school year. And that's that's what allows us to save time. And we're very fortunate that there are schools that have this as a model. We've reached out to a local one and they've been able to help us tremendously in just in terms of helping guide some of the pacing and and decisions as as we look to hopefully begin that writing process very soon. So there are models out there and and we know that it can be done that full school year once you target the right group of students. This last slide here illustrates the benefits for our students. You'll see the core sequence, Algebra, Geometry, Algebra II in yellow, green and blue on this diagram. So that's the first three years for high school for most students. The courses in the pink are are fourth year options. There are more included in the program of studies. There's just some of them that are listed here. But you'll note that students that start in the yellow, green, blue, like Algebra, Geometry and Algebra II, they don't have an opportunity to get to AP Calculus without advancing and accelerating at some point. They only have one option to pick from. They have to pick one course their senior year. Maybe they've been able to budget away some time and they can double up and take Precal, AP Stats or Computer Science. But most students have one option that's of all these courses in pink. And they don't have the next available to them because they aren't far enough along that sequence. So by taking Algebra and Geometry Honors, you'll complete that core sequence and then you'll have two years of time that's spent living in those courses in the pink. And so that better allows that type of a student who's ready to take on that challenge an opportunity to get to the AP Calculus class, which better prepares them for their future, whatever those goals might be. It just provides the access to those courses that they don't have without doing some form of acceleration. And those current models come at a cost of either a class during the school day or the financial cost of summer.
All right. So in summary, this would increase students' access to AP courses for the high achieving freshmen that come in that have not been accelerated in their coursework prior. These are a few things that came up in PTAC that we wanted to address. It would be cost neutral. The FTE that would have gone towards those students in Algebra I would just be reallocated to the FTE for the students in Algebra and Geometry Honors. Someone had asked if the block course would still run. We have every intention of still running it next year just because this year's freshmen wouldn't have had an opportunity to take this course. But the hope is that in the future, we don't need the block class. We don't want kids to have to forfeit a an elective course to double up on the block class during the school year. And then we know that we have a we have a population of students that this course would serve very well. We feel like this course would challenge learners and support them and allow them to better meet their post-secondary goals. All right. What questions do we have?
So do you anticipate that there will be students who've already taken Algebra in eighth grade that want to take this class or no? This is only going to be for the kids that took eighth grade common core now?
Correct. This will only be for students who took eighth grade common core now.
So I think one thing that's a clarification for people, I think, is that this course that's being proposed is different from the course that exists, especially at Central that I'm very familiar with, which is the Integrated Algebra and Geometry Honors course, which is for students that have completed Algebra and Geometry prior to freshman year that want to decelerate or reinforce the foundations of either Algebra or Geometry. And so this is not replacing that course. This is for a different cohort of students. So I'm very familiar with pathways to acceleration and that it already exists in the geometry. My biggest, I have two big concerns. One, that this is being taught as an honors course yet. The students that go through this course will not be seeing the same, while they may see the same algebra content that they may have seen in eighth grade, they're not going to see the honors geometry course that most of at least the Central kids either take in eighth grade or as freshmen. So they're not going to see that same textbook. They're not going to see as far as I can have, are they going to be doing two common proofs? So I'm concerned about the honors level. That's the first thing. You know, right now, the pathways are if you come in in Algebra, you are considered a freshman year, a regular grade level student. And then you take regular geometry over the summer or sophomore year. So I'm unclear why this isn't being taught at the regular level since it won't be encompassing all of the same content that the honors kids. And what disadvantage will they have then going to Algebra II trig honors compared to their peers?
So I will just say really quickly that we have students that came in Algebra I last year, took geometry over the summer and were such high achievers that they're actually in Algebra II trig honors right now. So so I do think that there are students that unfortunately had a bad test day in fifth grade and that just stuck them in a trap that they weren't able to get out of. I also think that while the enjoyment and challenge textbook won't be the textbook for the course, it's a wonderful resource and I foresee us using it to supplement some of the material to enrich the geometry content that we do in that course.
That textbook also does a really nice job of providing that algebra context for, you know, with the geometry blended together. So it is a really nice resource. A lot of a lot of schools use that textbook. And so I would still think we would be doing a lot of that deep diving to finding the right problems to allow us to do both at one time.
There's also just something to be said for the fact that honors courses are not just about having different content. But honors courses are also about having a different pace, different expectations, different intellectual capacities, asking questions that ask students to develop and intertwine ideas rather than just memorize and apply, right? So so when when we talk about this as an honors course, it's not just because it's it's supposed to be like the other courses. It's its own course, but it's going to be asking students to do the types of things that we think of when we think of honors work.
So so I think of honors as acceleration and enrichment. So they're going to be taking it, but I'm wondering where that time is going to come from with two whole courses, you know, in one. So that's, you know, I I see the the regular algebra content, which I'm familiar with at the high school, and the geometry content kind of coming together for a high achieving kid at the regular level and then moving on and determining if that student is ready for honors and Algebra II trig honors. But I'm concerned about how much can be done at an honors level with all of the content and will it all be able to happen?
Did you have a comment?
No, I was indicating that we might be done.
Ready to leave the table? Why would we leave the table? I so just to summarize again, this is, you know, a very interesting course offering that shows a lot of depth of thought and research into the needs of the students. It seems to be student-based, centered around, like you said, identified population that for whatever reason. Again, a bad test day is a possibility. Certainly we all have those where they get stuck. And this is a way that we've talked about at previous board meetings, you know, accelerating out of a trap and trying to to help kids to achieve at a better level. And this seems like a great opportunity. I do like that you threw in on that second to last slide, that cost neutral, because that certainly is going to be one of the questions we get. New class, new FTE, that's of course is not is not that. Again, just to clarify, just to reinforce, this does satisfy, again, the algebra and geometry graduation requirements for District 86. So it's not just some sort of partial credit or any, it's full. And as a que, as you were going through this, were was the team, I guess, informed during the during the writing of this by some of the initial, what I'd be as very positive work on the integrated math one, two and three curriculum and how to kind of reteach and re-deliver some of the content and that providing a maybe additional pathway here. Just thinking, where did this class, where did it start, the thinking start for to come up with this?
We we looked at, oh, I'm sorry. In in all honesty, we looked at, we we reached out and we looked at other districts and what they were doing to serve the student population. And this is a course that they're running. So it's, I would love to take credit for the course. I cannot. We do have, you know, a nearby district that we've been talking with that this is a well-established course that they've been running. I wish I could take credit for it, but again, it was, we have a population of students that we could serve better. And we've made a goal to try and figure out how to reach them without the summer, without blocking. And this was kind of where we landed. So it's there, like a team hasn't been assembled to start the writing yet. We're waiting for approval to do that. But we've talked to our departments about it, you know, and we presented in PTAC. So we are, we're excited about it. We think this could be a really great opportunity for that population of students. So hopefully that answers your question.
Sure. I did want to say you brought up again, I want to appreciate the thinking that went into this, not just for breaking out of a pathway or a track, but you, you know, there's the option for those kids to take the Algebra I and say, take geometry in summer school. You highlight that not everybody has $600 to throw around to their to a summer class and everybody can arrange their schedules for delivering the students of the class wherever they might be. And so providing an option here for those students that are, can be higher achieving without having it be an additional financial burden potentially on a family where that might be the deciding factor. I just, I very much appreciate how that was highlighted in there for our population.
Thank you. I I do want to say one more thing. And Mr. Markoff had mentioned this at PTAC. It's really a low-risk opportunity for students because if it's, if if we have a student in there and they clearly cannot keep up with the pace or it is a little too high level, then they take Algebra I and, you know, no harm done.
Yeah, I really see it as nothing but an upside, especially when there is a content area like math or or languages where there is a track. It's determined really early. I would say that after hearing your presentation, the notation of it being an honors course, given an honors course makes sense to me. Not just the, because you had mentioned that whereas it might have taken two days to teach something, it's kind of condensed more into one one day for the student that can do that. It really is intelligently created and intentional for the, that students don't learn differently. They don't learn at the same time. They don't learn at the same place. They don't bloom at the same time. So it's really safe to keep them in a track that's determined early on and not give them more opportunities to then bloom when it's appropriate for them and hopefully get them to the pink areas of their optionality with the later years. So I think it's a wonderfully creative solution in your content.
I think the other thing that I wanted to mention is, you know, when you, you create an AP, you're looking for AP opportunities for students. And it's very hard to suddenly just become AP student-ready. There's, an AP course does move really fast. And so when those options are sitting there at the senior level, by starting that work early to go at a faster pace, to, to gradually transition them and then through the honors sequence, it helps build that capacity to persevere. And so it's, it's kind of like a four-year process. So by that time, you're, you're a senior, you're ready for that, that challenge. And so I think that honors level kind of speaks to that as well.
Has the district ever offered Algebra I in summer school prior to freshman year? I know we're segueing to a summer school presentation eventually.
You have like a wonderful question to ask our directors. Yeah, I don't know the answer.
I do not believe they have. I think the thought is that because summer is very condensed, it's an eight-week session, Algebra I is truly such a foundational area of mathematics that, you know, like, if you don't have the Algebra foundation, calculus doesn't go well. It's not because you don't know the calculus, it's the Algebra that's the, the core concern area. And so I think in the past, there had been some concern that it's not something to be rushed. It's into an eight-week curriculum and then jump right into Geometry. Just something that we could make sure we take the time to develop, so we don't have issues down the road.
So you have 134-page document in front of you. I know that you got it about a week ago, but I'm sure that there's still time to look through and send us your questions or thoughts. We'll take everything from you tonight. And I will bring back a revised version before the 27th for your consideration for approval. And have a presentation, a short presentation about anything that we've changed that is of consequence between now and then.
Are we going to have an opportunity to ask other questions about the program of studies tonight? Or I, I?
I, I will be here all night. I'm not sure that's on the agenda, but I'd be happy to step in.
I thought there was time now.
This would be the time, yes.
To read, to discuss some of the other, in P T A C. I think, oh, we can lock them out.
Absolutely.
Thank you, guys.
Very much.
You asked earlier about feedback on the honors, whether you're going to create more classes. Did you want that, lots on that?
Absolutely, any, anything and everything that's in there.
I, I would say the more, the better. It's another opportunity to provide opportunities to students. And I, I honed in on, first of all, I know we all receive email and I heard, the fact that we have one program of studies, the district, is unbelievable. I think that I've gone back in the minutes and I've seen discussion of it as far back as like seven years, eight years, just the lining of courses. So the fact that it's here is really a testament, I, to the strategic plan, community, the community, and then just the, the whole process of, of getting through a strategic plan to get to this. It's, it's really truly amazing. So that's going to give our district some structure and, like, process going forward. So one of the things I honed in on that you had mentioned was, the honors idea is an opportunity to offer classes perhaps where it may not be able to be offered due to size. So while we have a program of studies, one of the things that I've always said is, it makes no sense to offer courses in both schools if they can't run in both schools. So that's something that's going to be able to help solve that problem and commit to being able to offer all courses in our program of studies at both schools. I think that that's important.
So my concerns about earned honors credit are specifically with the English courses. And so, you know, I'd asked questions ahead of time. And I think in looking back over the presentations last year, you know, it was a little bit, my understanding was a little bit different than how it's being portrayed now as, you know, an option for kids that want to try honors class. I have no problem with that, I have no problem with offering a few of those courses in English. But I'm not, at this point, before data's collected on the four courses, or the two English courses, excuse me, it's two, I think it's too soon to roll out more and, and wait to see how it goes. And, you know, I, I also read the response about, you know, there's a very, there's no electives in English at this point, junior and senior year, other than, well, there's not electives, there's no English courses offered for students that have been in the honors, you know, English I honors, English II honors. It's AP Lang and AP Lit, which a year ago, I didn't know, college don't, colleges don't accept both of those exams anyway, right? So our, while I understand and appreciate that there's an FTE consideration, if we're still planning to roll out more of these English classes, why couldn't we have some earned honors? Some that, you know, are for your regular learner, that, or your regular grade-level learner that's still learning, you know, that needs those foundational English skills? And then some standalone honors courses? I, I guess I'm not understanding the FTE argument because we're still running English courses. So a fifth is a fifth, it would just be teaching something else. I am concerned that until the data comes in, are we able to meet the needs? You know, these are foundational skills that these kids are going to need. And so are we able to meet the needs of all of our learners through junior and senior year by only offering either the two AP courses and then earned honors credit?
Not really a question.
Right, yeah.
More of a comment.
I'm trying to figure out where to insert an answer, but I, I'm taking some notes, yeah.
And if I can jump in on that. From last year's second reading of the program of studies related to the earned honors credit, you know, one of the, the last line on this is, "Earned honors credit does not replace traditional standalone honors classes." So to me, that was part of that same concern, is that we're meeting the needs of those who need to gradually transition to honors with the earned honors option. But what about those students that need those traditional honors tech courses? And then the English classes without those being there?
But they are, the AP classes are both those options. I, I was an English teacher for decades, that, that's, that's what you do. You don't, I mean, yes, you can have, there are, there are places that have honors versions of senior classes, that is, it's an entirely different level, it's an entirely different track, right? And that, that, that is something. But, you know, you can still take an AP Literature class after getting applied on an AP Language class, because you want it on your transcript, because you want the challenge, because you want to be in an AP class, because your friends are in that class, it's a tough class, right? So, so those are there, and, and that was part of the discussion, was that those still exist. And when we said we're not going to replace them, it just meant, for the most part, there's not going to be an earned honors English II, because there's an English II honors, right? But in the places where we don't have the honors, right, places, there, there, there can be, there can be a way for students to begin to accelerate who had not thought about it that way before, right? And, and Member Levinthal, I would, I would push back just slightly on the idea that these are foundational skills. When you get to the junior and senior levels of English, there are a lot of expectation that you've mastered a number of the English skills and you're developing more complex skills even in the regular-level college prep classes, right? So, so those are all happening at the same time, while extending the invitation to try something even more complicated. And that's what the earned honors classes are about at this point in time. But you're right, we have not collected that data. It's anecdotal, we are one month in, and I'm very comfortable. And so are the people who are, are writing the classes, to say, "We can move through this year and we can stay with the ones that we have," right? And, and not expand them, but, but the, but the intention was always to think about these as places where kids, especially juniors and seniors, could stretch themselves without having to take the AP Language or Literature courses. That was, that was by design.
Well, the program seems to offer a great degree of flexibility for a couple of reasons. One, Cynthia, to your point about how we don't have to have two tracks for junior and senior year, where we maybe have, because of enrollment itself, we can't offer some of those classes that we offer in Central. Where we can offer an earned honors credit course, and we have the capacity to say, "A student that just wants to take a regular-level course can take that regular course." A student that wants to challenge themselves has the, the opportunity to do so and have an honors course, and honors course, with honors coursework. So that, that seems to be a, again, you know, going back to talking about the, the math course we were just talking about, the acceleration there. It's providing, you know, an interesting pathway for students that may not think they have that pathway before them. And so I, again, I, I see that as a, as a net positive. One of the questions that I have, and I don't know, maybe either of you, the question of, of needing kind of the, the data, what is the data that we need? Because if we're seeing a success on the ground after a month, basically, of being in the school of, of not just, you know, kids at the regular level taking it, but kids challenging themselves to do it, yeah, some of those kids may take the honors work and they may not succeed, just as kids may take an honors course and they may not succeed in an honors course. That's not a reason not to do an honors course. It's just going to be something that, that students will have to address further on in their academic career. But right now, by expanding the honors credit program here, we are addressing, again, what I mentioned before, there's a, there's a need for the students to have the option to take something that's more advanced, some honors that looks good on, on transcript. I know while there have been some transcript questions, those do seem to be relatively easily solvable as well. And, you know, for this specific department, you know, English, as an English teacher, you can probably appreciate, you know, when we look at some of the, say, the, the Geometry honors course versus a Geometry regular course, or an English course in what, versus an English honors course, what you can offer as that advanced material to accelerate through. A regular, or lending this in to certain other subject areas wouldn't really work because of how the content is delivered, how the accelerated content is delivered in an honors capacity. Whereas especially here in the English department, or in the Fine Arts department, there is a, an easier way to offer those options for that credit. At least in the way that I, I think about, I think back, think back to it. And why, it's kind of, why wouldn't we, why wouldn't we do that? Why wouldn't we kind of embrace this as a, as a path forward to offer, again, that flexibility, the optional challenge to our students?
Well, I mean, I, I think the one question that was directed at me and Dr. Covino was what, what, what kind of data, why do you need data, you know, before you extend it? Because, you know, maybe perhaps we have different philosophies, because we're piloting it right now. Now, piloting to me isn't 700 kids, typically it's, you know, one or two sections and you see how it goes. And you're looking to see how it works. And so we're only a month into it, and we're four weeks into school, and, you know, everybody's great out of the gates. And what's going to happen as time goes on and what is that data going to look like? So to me, it's educationally sound to finish the piloted year, collect the hard and soft data, and determine if this is something that we want to, that is worthy of expansion? Or if it's really, you know, not potentially meeting the needs of your regular-level students in the course? Because maybe they're not getting, you know, the attention that they need on some of the more foundational skills, or the expansion of those foundational skills as juniors? And is it meeting the needs of our honors population and everybody in between? So to me, I would slow, only in English, I mean, I see it, how it plays out in art, because it's played out in art in kind of a similar fashion for many years. Wait and see, because English is a, it's one of our core content areas. And it's new in art versus, while it's newish in art in some of the other classes, it was used in a different way prior.
And I will also add on the data side of things. We consider this as kind of a pathway to honors, a way of allowing those students who don't normally traditionally take honors courses to see that they are capable and see that they can challenge themselves in order to take those courses. So my question that I, I posed is, how many of those students that are in these, these 750-some-odd students that are in these, this pilot program, how many of those are taking honors for the first time? And we don't have that data yet. So I would like to see that data before expanding anymore. Are we meeting the needs of those students that we targeted in the first place? Or are these other students that already take honors courses in the honors, earned honors program? And so then are we meeting those needs? And it, then my other question is, is, you know, do we know? I know there's typically, I think, 10 items, 10 different sections in order to earn that honors. Is that the same as the traditional honors bump? It's a different class, but should it get that same one-point bump? Or should it get a half-point bump? Or what, what the case may be on those, some of the considerations I would like to talk about.
So as you discussed this with the department chairs, I'm curious to hear what you would, you said that they agreed that perhaps taking more time would be appropriate. Maybe that's, those weren't your exact words, but something along those lines. What are the data points that you and department chairs would consider to be appropriate to review before determining that this is a class that should be expanded?
So there are some qualitative and quantitative points that we would, would look at between the end of semester one, so about the third week in January, and that March time when we would actually discuss it. Qualitatively, it would be a survey just about sort of how students felt, right? Who were in these courses relating to the way that they were challenged? Did they accept the challenge, did they feel hindered by it? Did they, you know, a, a, appreciate that they did not have to engage and just take the regular course that they signed up for? So questions of those, that nature. But on the quantitative side, you know, we, we would be, we are looking at, I mean, I have charts coming in on a daily basis now, how many students are attempting honors work? You know, we, we have set aside a place in our gradebook for those classes and only those classes, where teachers are able to register the scores of the honors work separate from all of the other work. So even if a kid does the first two honors assignments or honors challenges, and then decides not to do any others, it has no bearing on their grade in the class whatsoever. I want to make that very clear from the beginning. This is not a thing where you opt in and have to stay in. Sometimes you, you make a choice after the third assignment and say, "You know what? I can probably, I can probably push myself a little bit there, too." So we're going to look at that gradebook data, we're going to look at who's making the attempts, we're going to look at past history. So to answer your question, Member James, about, you know, a first versus, you know, extended honors opportunities that students have, have chosen over the years, which would also go towards what might be called deceleration as well. "I was in, in an AP class, but I chose to do this instead because I wanted to have a little bit more, you know, school-life balance." I knew that the AP class was going to be just, you know, murder on my, my schedule. I'm in five other AP classes. And that's a very legitimate concern for a number of students in our district. So, you know, so, so those are the types of, of sort of quantitative questions that we would be asking and looking at, either through the survey data or from gradebooks. And then, of course, we, we need to talk to our teachers. I mean, they are absolutely the best people to tell us how things are going. And, you know, at some point in time, probably after two months of the class, maybe three months, we'll pull them together and probably have their department chairs work with them to sort of create an, an analysis right now of what it is that they wished we would have started with, how they would change the course in the future. So, Member Levinthal, to your point, the reason I'm saying that I don't have a concern about the English classes only staying with the two for the pilot is because that's valuable information. But what we also have to consider, right, is that if we don't expand it, right? We are take, we are limiting students to only two choices if they want that honors opportunity, as opposed to the four choices or more that may be choices inside the English department outside of AP Lit and Language. We'd also be looking at, at drops in AP enrollments as well, because that's, that's a potential reality as well.
So Dr. Covino, the last meeting, you know, you had corrected me when I said, "Hey, let's just put another transcript of seniors." So I guess that's still one question I would have, to the extent these kids want to have honors on their resume who are seniors in high school applying to college, they don't have an honors choice unless they're in earned honors credit, which won't appear until the end of the semester and/or if they choose AP, so if that's, if that's the case.
Which is not a small one. Choosing AP is, that's the big one, both of them.
And so for my, I guess, I dare call it a concern, but it certainly seems like the program in general is, you know, serving a tremendous purpose. I would also encourage waiting time to allow data to come in. You have a tremendous amount of data points with 700 students in the program. But ultimately, I guess where I'm really kind of caught in my own mind, fully supporting the program. But ultimately, I guess where I'm really kind of caught in my own mind, fully supporting the program, relates to there's no honors courses for kids who don't want to take AP. And on a granular level, the kids who are, who face that predicament as seniors in the fall, you know, when they become aware of that, they have to make, you know, for a 17-year-old kid, a pretty stressful choice. Choose not to get AP on your course, on your transcript, or choose to perhaps take yet another AP that you otherwise weren't planning on, because we don't have honors.
Right, which is not a new choice. This is not a choice that we have been forcing kids to make people, I mean, this is, it's not existent. This is actually a new choice that kids have that they can write about and say, I am doing honors work. So to answer your first question, you know, notation on the transcript, it's not an H after the name right now, but it will be after they finish the course. We have counselors, we have student options during the application process, and we have added a notation to our very nice pamphlet that goes to every single school with every single transcript that explains what it is as well, right? And that goes out through, not be honest with, with all transcripts. So we are telling colleges about it. By the way, earned honors credit is not a District 86 idea. This is not like, it's not something people have heard of in other places, right? So we are not alone. We are standing on the shoulders of other schools across the nation who have decided on alternate ways to provide students rigorous educational opportunities while not necessarily taking traditional advanced placement courses. And so it's just, it's another opportunity path that we want to just keep open for our kids.
So the expansion that you're, that is being considered for the future, are additional English courses?
To, the, as we bring in the new junior, senior options, the two that are coming in is literature of science, technology, and something else, and women's literature. And both of those would be the expansion, because those are the two new courses that are currently being written right now for debut next school year, right? And then there will be more, two more the year after that. So they're not doing them all at once because it's a lot of work. So, you know, it's slowly but surely. The other ones are the new aligned art, of course, it's in fine arts, not in the music side, but in the art side. So Drawing and Painting 1, 2, and 3, Graphic Design. Like these courses that, as Member Loventhal pointed out, have actually traditionally in the past had like a stacked honors section. And sometimes at this table, we talk about stacked courses as being something that only happens on one side of the district. It's almost exclusively happening in the art department on both sides. We have a lot of stacked courses. Because I believe if I look at the enrollments correctly about two weeks ago, you know, it might be four or five students who actually enroll in an honors art version of like Painting 2 or something like that, but that stays inside of the course. So it just makes sense to expand the earned honors credit option inside of those courses as well, which is, I think, what you were saying.
That's traditionally how it's been.
Yes.
You commit very early to do the honors, you know? It wasn't Drawing and Painting, it was Drawing and Design, right? And so.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So my other question is, so this, the transcript notation will remain the way it's been, the way it is this year for seniors that register for this next year? But also, I think the thing, you know, we've heard about, while it's not, you know, the student's been in honors all along, you know, one thing that, you know, you're told when your kid is a freshman is that you want to see growth. So let's balance the schedule, and we'll build from there year over year. The kid that's been in regular English, that's now trying the honors, it's not going to denote that on their transcript either. Is there any way around this?
Well, I mean, we also can't think of a student's transcript or their path through high school as a single story, right? This is not just about their growth in English. I mean, if you look at a student's transcript and you see, you know, the fact they went from regular classes to honors or AP classes in science or math, you're going to see it there, you know, in a different way. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't look at this as an indicator like an I gotcha, you didn't, you didn't grow in that one area. We are, we are creating other opportunities or other ways to, to discuss what the student is doing in those classes with the people who are making those decisions. I don't know if you remember the transcript that I put up on the screen before. Nobody in their right mind is looking at that transcript and thinking that student is not applying themselves. It is AP, 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 English, right? And yeah, I guess that English does stand out, but, you know, one inch below it, it says this is an earned honors course, right? So, you know, these are, these are realities of the, of the application process. One thing to note, though, also, in addition to all those other places, you'll see in the program of studies where we described the earned honors pilot, I added a section that was not there before because of the conversations we've been having so that counselors can have a reference and parents can have a reference where it says GPA and transcript notes. And then it's about a paragraph or so that basically outlines some of the discussion we've been having about how those things will look on transcripts and what the GPA currently looks like so that there is clarity as people are making decisions.
Do you have time?
Not on the earned honors.
Me neither. I think I'm, I'm even, go ahead.
But my next question was about the American Sign Language. And I know I posed that question in advance to you. Last year, when we were discussing the program of studies, it was agreed, or at least discussed, that we'd be exploring the opportunity to allow American Sign Language to be offered at Hinsdale Central as well as Hinsdale South. I do know of many students and many families that go through quite a few hoops in order to get their student to go to Hinsdale South in order to take this course, if that's the course they're looking to get at. And it's not easily navigated. So if you can just speak to that, I know we asked that question, and there was quite a few, quite a long response on.
Yeah, so I'll kind of highlight some of the points in my written response to you. Just, we'll start with staffing. You know, so this is something that we have been exploring. This is something that has been a conversation with the department chairs in World Languages, with Ms. Morfoot, who is our deaf and hard of hearing, what do we call her?
Administrator.
Administrator. She works for Ladsy, she's not a District 86 employee. You know, if we look historically at what the district engaged in, I, this is where Mr. Stevenson would be able to help me with, with the actual budgeting history. Ms. Morfoot described it many, many years ago as a handshake agreement, which we no longer have in school districts, between District 86 and Ladsy to say, we'll teach you, we'll give you someone to teach five sections of ASL if you give us five classrooms to use for the deaf and hard of hearing program through Ladsy. So that, there was, that was the piece that originated, this is how she tells the history. And that over time, it has become far more contractualized, right? To the point where we are, they are purchasing seats through Ladsy for multiple programs. We actually have one of the largest deaf and hard of hearing programs in the area. I believe that they were budgeting at Ladsy for about 50 students, and they're a little over 60 at this point in time. At Hinsdale South, I shared with you guys on our tour that I was able to tour one of the classes with Dr. Hardy, which was one of the Woods classes. It's an extraordinary experience that I would encourage everyone to take a look at. But, so it is a program that operates outside of District 86. So one of the considerations that we've been talking about is what it would take to bring the program inside of District 86, right? Because in the end, if we are expanding a program, we are by definition expanding courses and expanding teachers. They are not our teachers. They are contractual service teachers outside of our school district that do not operate in our HHSDA contract, nor are they paid on the same scale as our, as our teachers are, right? So we would be talking about adding contractual services for graduation credits in our building taught by non-District 86 teachers. So as you can imagine, these would become sort of union negotiation issues, right? So that's one piece of this. In addition, Ms. Moore and I, more Ms. Moore than me, and she could probably speak better to this, have looked at credentialing for teachers, right? And really, you have to have a PEL, a professional educator license, in any subject area, right? And you have to be able to sign, right? And we, as a district, would have to figure out what the credentials are for that position. That shorthand for there is no endorsement, there is no credential system, there is no school that is producing ASL certified teachers in the state of Illinois that we are aware of. So what we are looking for are sort of like needles in a haystack, right? And so that's another issue that we have also been exploring. So I don't want you to think that we haven't been thinking about this and wanting to create some sort of, you know, a larger discussion. There are just a lot of sort of behind the scenes pieces that have to be discussed and come into play before we can even offer the course. Because as you suggested, we believe students might want to take it, and we cannot be in a position to say, here you go, oh, no, wait, we can't do that, right? So we want to be sure about what we're doing first. In addition, we want to think about how it's going at other schools. So if you take a look at Lyons Township, if you take a look at Naperville 204, if you take a look at Plainfield, you'll see four school districts that have an articulated four-year sequence of ASL. Every single one of them, when I called their administrators, it all started with a very robust ASL club, right? They're then expanded to a course, which then expanded, you know. We have dual credit for ASL 1 for anyone who takes it. It's through COD, but it is not as a language. It's through their DHH program, right? So there's some pieces in there that we'd also have to negotiate as far as if it even qualifies as a language for dual credit, right? But we currently, you know, that you can earn credit at COD for, right, for ASL 1 only, not ASL 2 or beyond. When I spoke with Naperville 203, right, they have a single year, right? A single year, and it's just sort of a exploring what ASL is like, right, type of course. That's another option that we could think about in the future. That eliminates, though, a student taking it as sort of their college-bound language. It is true that ASL has become, and this is, you know, a part of the research, accepted as a language in many schools. There are some that just don't, though, right, accept it as a language. I don't know if it's been updated, but as of two years ago, when the research was started, Notre Dame didn't accept it. So anyone who wants to go to Notre Dame, this is not going to be a land tree. That may not be the case anymore. I have not looked back since the 18-month-old research. So that's a possibility. But many schools do. The SEAL by literacy might accept it, which makes it very hard for us to say, this is not something that we want to offer to a lot of kids, right? It's also going to be an accepted graduation requirement in 2028, 29, right? So there are reasons, we know that ASL is good, right? But there are a lot of barriers that are practical in nature, legal in nature, and contractual in nature that we have to work through and continue to talk about. So what I put in the program of studies is a sentence that basically says, we are still looking at this right now, it's housed at Hinsdale South. We know that there are some barriers, but it's just still part of a conversation. So I know that was a really, I said I was going to do the highlights, that was even more than the highlights, so I apologize. But that's what we've been doing, right, in the background, is talking through those pieces and consulting with those other agencies and organizations and schools to see, you know, how they, you know, how they do it.
I just don't understand why you can't poach somebody.
Oh, that's possible, but when we poach, we're poaching with Ladsy. I understand now that you're offering a joke, but.
College JpD, I'm not sure who their instructor is. So my last, my big concern, I don't think I fully understood last year that when we were approving program studies, we were approving those alignment plans that were embedded in the program of studies. And so I still have concerns about the social studies alignment, which I had expressed at the table last year. Specifically, the elimination of some of the courses, the standalone history courses in particular, and also philosophy honors and philosophy, as well as moving AP or K history to a junior senior elective only. So I would be interested in maybe at the next read, kind of getting an update about where that alignment plan is. There was, you know, some qualified communicated flexibility by the former central department chair, but I'd be interested in hearing where that is and if it's still on track to go on as planned.
Any additional questions for Dr. Corvino? The first three of program studies. Thank you very much for your work, for the work of all of your associates and your team members to bring this together.
May I offer the transition to the next presentation?
You may.
Okay. So we have two wonderful summer school directors who I really hope are still behind me and have not left. And thank you for waiting patiently. Sue Grady and Jordan Stopp. Jordan is new as one of our directors this year, and they'll probably introduce themselves. I'm going to now leave the table because it's for you, but I just wanted to say thank you to them. They did a terrific job for our first year back in in-person instruction in many, in two and a half years, two summers. So without further ado, our summer school directors.
Nope.
Are you ready?
I guess, okay. Hello.
Good evening.
I'm Sue.
I'm Jordan Stopp. Thank you for having us.
So this year, we were in person, as Dr. Corvino said, after the pandemic years. And the last three years have been different, every single one. We anticipate changes again next year, just in some of the things that we were able to flush out as we did some hybrids, some online, some asynchronous, some synchronous, as well as in-person. So for the two of us, it was our first in-person six-week experience. You can go to the next slide.
We'll start with one of the purposes of summer school, which is to allow students who have had a chelmian year to get credit recovery courses out of their way. We had 27 students that took courses, mostly, as you can see from the numbers, math seemed to be the area we had more kids placed, and they worked through edutainment courses. And to meet the needs of students, to make sure that they felt supported, throughout the summer, we added two instructional positions to help the students move through the curriculum. It was pretty challenging online for them, and wanted to make sure that they understood the material as they went along.
I mean, historically, you know, the years and years before we took over, the way that the credit recovery was, it was all, you know, on edutainment, and that was new for kids because they weren't doing that all year long. But then the pandemic kind of changed that experience for kids. So one of the things we're, you know, looking at and thinking about for next year is how to do the credit recovery a little bit different to maybe spice it up for kids so they're not on a computer for six weeks. But that means hiring more teachers, so I don't know, we'll see. So our academic intervention and enhancement courses, what we're really pleased was, we had two new courses this year for AP History Workshop Writing and AP Language. And we had two separate semester, well, two separate five-day sessions for AP Language and COM, and just one full session for AP History. Very well, you know, for the first year, we had pretty good attendance and enrollment. We expect more enrollment this summer as word of mouth. And we really are looking forward to in the next, you know, couple months, touching base with the AP teachers and checking like the students who were in the summer program. Can they really see that their skills benefited from that experience in the summer? So we'll be checking in on that a couple months.
And this is one of those experiences, I'm so sorry, where working with the department chairs, department chairs, being able to ask their teachers what needs are we seeing from students? And this was really teacher-driven and came out of the minds of teachers thinking, you know, this would be really a good experience for kids who are, you know, maybe they weren't in the honors program for freshman sophomore year, but they're trying the AP route. It just offered them a buffer right before, and it was just, it was very teacher-driven to meet the needs of students. So that was a neat experience.
The AP writing is so different from regular course writing, and so for the kids to have practice with that before they started was really good.
And then another course that we just wanted to touch base with, we've run it for years and years. This time, though, we separated the freshman reading strategies from algebra strategies courses just so that students who didn't need to take both sessions to improve their skills could pick and choose what worked for their schedules. But, you know, the students were identified through their math scores with department chairs, sending invitations to parents, and parents could see, you know, would they want their student to have this opportunity before freshman year? And we had students that enrolled in the math, so the algebra and in the reading strategies courses, or one or the other depending on their skill set. And this was always a pretty positive experience for students. They're in the school building before school starts, they're getting acquainted with the school building, and they're also strengthening some skills before starting the school year.
And the teachers who historically have taught these courses for years, they were very, very pleased to be back in person. They said it was so much better, so that was good. You can advance some. So this, the filling algebra gaps, we had filling algebra gaps for incoming geometry and filling geometry gaps, the two courses. We ended up having to combine those because we didn't have enough student enrollment, and we had one teacher differentiating in the classroom. And it was okay, you know, it was. And it, it was okay, you know, it was better than not running it at all. So she had her work cut out for her for, for those three weeks.
And we also, another goal of summer school is to help students be able to take courses in the summer to free up their schedules later in the school year. So you could see by our numbers, we had a pretty rigorous course advancement schedule as well. And we tried to offer courses at different times during the summer sessions that students could take more options if they wanted to. Driver education always proves to be a pretty strong experience for our students. And I think we also wanted to highlight the SER program as well, that it was predominantly online and it proved fruitful for students since most of their time is spent working with people outside of our district mentors and things. So it gave them more opportunity and flexibility for their schedules and.
And yeah, being back in person, you can see, as was mentioned earlier, that geometry advancement course, we had two really packed classes. And we were just saying, as we were chit-chatting back there, there was very little absenteeism. I mean, those kids were there every day for six weeks and it was a full classroom. So it's a lot of work. Um, science inquiry and research.
I almost nearly lost track. Go ahead. This is just a little bit more on the schedule before, for students to have opportunity. And since we were coming off of remote learning, some students having a lot of success with online learning, there were some programs that ran online. So we wanted to give kids the flexibility. Consumer education is an asynchronous course. It's been that way for quite some time, so it does have a lot of success there. The kids know exactly what they're getting into. This year we tried to run health and civics in a similar fashion, but they would have meeting times with their teachers. It, it's a little bit different than how they're used to during a regular school year of where, you know, they had to, I think there was a little bit of an issue with students thinking, oh, they could work at their own pace all the time and that wasn't accurate. So once they figured that out, then some adjustments had to be made for kids to meet their instructors and for instructors to be able to have a little bit more flexible deadline and things for kids to get the work done. But still, I mean, they're, they're both really high enrollment courses for us.
And I think we have a title there, I'm sorry. It's, it's health and civics ran synchronously, not asynchronously.
Let's see, this is what you were talking about before.
Yeah, so this, you know, there's really not much more to say about that geometry acceleration course. It is one of our biggest enrollments. So this, this school year, we had to pay out teachers to be trained in the infinite campus before they started summer school, so that added to our cost a little bit. As well as shifting from a five-day summer school to a four-day summer school necessitated some curriculum changes. So teachers were given some hours to revamp their curriculum. So some of those other two little expenditures in the middle there. But overall, we happy with, with the variance that you see there.
And just looking ahead, already kind of thinking about the schedule for next school year, this is what we are hoping to propose for the dates for semester one and semester two. Paying particular attention to the second week of semester one, where we want to make sure that community is honored and that, you know, time offered for students and families to, to do what they would see necessary and appropriate. And then we would have class on a Friday of that week, since they would not be there with us on the Tuesday of that week. And then semester two, we would have a little bit of a break for, for July before coming back. And again, mostly Monday through Thursday, but every once in a while having to change the dates due to a holiday.
So we will have to make a real change this year. Jordan and I will have to have some training and assistance in turning over the whole registration system to Infinite Campus. We know that all the tech team is working hard on our behalf to teach us that. And that will be a big learning curve for parents as well and students. So we'll be hopefully getting some instruction on that pretty quickly at the end of, you know, the first quarter, I mean, pretty, pretty soon, I would think. The civics, health and etymology that ran synchronously, it really created some, some scheduling issues for, for parents. I think when people read in the program of studies that it was online, it was just like, oh, right, it's online, I can do this whenever. But we had you, we had, you know, Zoom requirements, we had eight-to-one requirements and it was just too cumbersome. So we, I think we'll propose for next year that any class that we run online will be 100% asynchronous. It seems to be what the community wanted. The, the kids were really frustrated with having to log on. They're like, we have to go to work, you know, we have our summer camp. So those highly motivated students who want to open up their schedule, they do very well. Consumer economics has run like that for years. And so I think we're going to turn it over to that, that paradigm. Everybody's kind of sick of the Zoom and nobody wants to do it anymore. So we don't want to force kids into that. It's not rewarding. I think that's it. Is that it? Okay, any questions?
There you go. Civics, health and etymology that you're going to run off, you know, consider running only online. Would you also run it in person as well?
We, we probably will put that offer, the problem is find, like, finding people who want to teach it. So even if we do get the numbers, sometimes we just don't have the teachers who want to spend three weeks of their summer. So it just, it's a juggling act by the time we see who's enrolled and who wants to apply to teach. But civics for sure, we will offer in person. The one teacher who taught it synchronously, she's like, I'm not doing that again. Either I'm going to teach it in person or I'm not going to teach it. So, you know, we'll, we'll negotiate, negotiate that all when we get the program of studies ready. All right, thanks, everybody.
Thank you very much. Hang around.
We'll see you next time.
All right, we're going to move on to our next agenda item. Twelve point one, the superintendent's report. Superintendent Press.
Thank you, President Howell. So there's just six areas I just wanted to share tonight. The first one, we'll go to the next slide, Pete. Saw the slide earlier today, but I too just really want to really underscore tonight's presentation, the program of studies is really fairly monumental. I've been here since 2014 and I have been hearing and listening about different courses, completely different courses, didn't know that courses being run on the other campus, completely different program of studies since I have been employed in this district. And so I cannot underscore enough a couple of pieces. The phase in approach, so you heard tonight from the Department of Special Ed, it makes sense that they needed to come last because the core content had to organize first in order for special ed to make their changes and modifications. But just having that system and, and each bringing the teams together across the campuses to look at existing strengths, weaknesses and opportunities and threats, it is really a great space that the district is in. Part of what you'll hear later this school year is that ongoing professional development, are those common assessments? So we have those external anchors at high school level, SAT and maybe one-day science. We're not sure, SBM will let us know. But outside of those, it's really those local assessments and you could not get to those common pieces until all the work that had to be done by our program teams and under the direction of our department chairs, our assistant principals of instruction, all working with Chris. And so I really cannot underscore the monumental task. And in between all that, I think there was this thing called the pandemic. And so I think it's just really important to know that this is a very exciting part for the district as it's moving forward to get to that final phase four. Because that's really where you can roll up your sleeves to say, you know, Debbie and I are both math teachers and I'm teaching algebra two on this side of campus. She's across town. But now that we have finally a common syllabus, common learning targets, common big anger assessments, we can start collaborating and sharing together. Or even from the same building, because even within the building, as we found out, two math teachers teaching the same course had completely different topics perhaps and assessments. And so I just really want to thank Chris for all his leadership and really doing an incredible amount of work. And really our principals and the assistant principals of instruction, I cannot underscore the amount of work that has been going on at the local ED department and at those levels. And so we really want to thank them, so thank you. Another piece we have here coming up in October, our students will be out, but our staff, we had, during our series earlier, we will be undergoing our Alice training staff-wide on that Friday, the 21st, the day after parent-teacher conferences. And then later in November, which we will share later, there are some student drills and there is actually a new piece to the Alice training for parents. And so we will be pushing out a video that comes with that later here as the semester goes on. But we will be undertaking that training. Once again, we fresh this year, second time coming up here in a few weeks. Also, we're kicking off the school year. As you know, historically, District 86 has partnered with Hinsale 181. This has opened up to the entire district though, but we are about to kick off our first community speaker series. So there is the link there if anyone is interested. Our first one though has come up here shortly, October 18th and 19th. And that information is there and the other two sessions are also listed. So it's a wonderful opportunity for parents with our particular topics. They do a nice job of vetting some national speakers to bring in that information for our parent community as a whole. Another upcoming event is our parent network meeting. This is a subgroup of the Hinsale Central PTO, but we have been in collaboration with both sides of town for quite some time. And so the main focus is to work with students with families with children with IEPs or 504s. And so they also have a meeting coming up and you can see the information that they will be specifically talking about. And these are annual quarterly events that we host as well. And so once again, there's a contact information for, we welcome anyone from either campus. Our next community conversation, the last one was around the SPED and the math information. Our next one though will be about our secondary instructional schedules. And so as our board liaison mentioned earlier today, task force was scheduled to meet the day we had the event at Hinsale Central. So we have rescheduled that to be actually, I'll show all of our calendars, is the day before this. So the committee will have literally met on that Tuesday and then we'll be having our community conversations on that Wednesday. And we will be bringing all that information together to give another update as well and to inform our work on that task force.
Any questions for Superintendent Press? We're going to move on now to five point one, audience communication. The board will now hear audience comments for up to a total of forty-five minutes. Speakers will have three minutes to address the board and will not exceed in time tonight. Speakers who don't have the opportunity to address the board during our first public participation agenda item will have the opportunity to offer their comments during the second public participation agenda item. Our Board of Education protocols state that board meetings are meetings of the board held in public, not open forum town hall meetings. Board members will not engage the public during public comment. The board will keep this in mind as we conduct our meetings, allowing the public to provide input. Time allotted on the agenda to ensure multiple voices of the community inform board deliberations. We have seven people signed up. I'm not sure if they're all here, but we'll see. First is Linda Burke.
Do I have a mic?
Is the green light on?
Reading button.
Oh, okay. Thank you for your service. I've naturally really, really enjoyed the presentation on the curriculum. But first I'd like to say how proud we should be of our Hinsdale South students who took the initiative to bring supplies to the asylum seekers in the community and that their faculty advisor was also very supportive. During the civil rights era, the text was often quoted, "A little child shall lead them." And if this happened again, we should all be very honored and these kids set a great example for the community. I'd also like to welcome tonight my friends and passengers, Janet Dick Kingman, who did as much as any human beings to pass the referendum. So they, they got to see some of their handiwork tonight. They didn't know they'd be stuck till the bitter end though, writing with me. Sorry, you guys. Then finally, I, I would like to put in a word for absolutely do not abolish the summer school geometry option. It's okay to try this combo course, although I think, I think it sounds very stressful for kids who are just starting honors to combine it all into one course. However, many, many kids thrive on the summer school option to concentrate fully on one thing without all sorts of competing classes and extracurriculars. Clearly it's very popular, it's very successful, it's very sought after. So I think we should keep this geometry option in the, in the summer. Some families don't like summer school, everyone will not, you know, will not flock to it, but there will still be need. If a family's fallen on hard times, you guys, give them a scholarship. We're not charging tuition to the, to our McKinley Vento and free and reduced price kids, are we? God, I hope not, that would be outrageous. Come on, scholarships for families in need. For a large part of the district, $600 is a small price for vastly increased odds of getting into medical school on time. That's, that's a bigger deal than $600 for some. But for, just give the kids a scholarship. Also, and I think we definitely need a summer biology course because the Pituitary Experiment continues and the harm continues. Nutriere, of course, has summer, a summer biology course for students on the physics first track. We should do, thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next up is Andrew Catten.
In a school district where the motto is a tradition of excellence in education, as this last part is implied, one might expect after attending most Board of Education meetings for the better part of the last two years, that the general impression of D86 is one that exhibits quality and multitudes while delivering a world-class experience and product to its customers, the students, the families, the residents and our taxpayers. It's my observation though, this tradition is rapidly slipping away. Instead of topics that should dominate the discussion like continuous improvement in academics or the paradigm shift in education in a post-COVID era are simply sidelined for the status quo. This Board of Education has even gone so far as to block the formation of an academic excellence committee in recent months to the detriment of students in both high schools. The district superintendent seems to be entangled in scandal after scandal, either about racially motivated stories disparaging the community or even race-centered equity experiments that show zero evidence of improved student performance and reek of outside political motivations to fuel her own personal ambitions. This activity drains the district of precious resources and time. It distracts from the primary mission and purposely drives division between the high schools' communities. We have not forgotten the cowardly leadership offered by this superintendent through the masking mandates and the social emotional scars that is left on students and their families. And worse yet, nothing of merit has been done to fix COVID-related learning loss. This is real and demonstrated in test scores and other measurable metrics. Other problems that persist can be linked directly to the one-size-fits-all strategic plan adopted and championed by Ms. Prentice. This has harmed both high achievers and special needs students. The 86 Forward experiment lacks relevance, vision, principles, stewardship of finances and sustained operational excellence that delivers results for every student district-wide. These problems are then only amplified by a Board of Education majority and its leadership which rubber stamps this lacking agenda. This district should no longer accept the low expectations and performance of the Tammy Prentice pilot programs and rather we desire and demand a return to educational rigor that delivers and leads all other competitive institutions, comparable institutions, one that excels in offering opportunity to launch our children's future. Because of this current and sustained failure, as a future parent who desires to send my three children here, I can no longer sit idly by and hope for change. Therefore, tonight I am announcing my candidacy for one of the open Board of Education seats this April. My name is Andrew Catten and I hope to earn your confidence and your vote. If elected, I will restore transparency, accountability, integrity and trust that will foster the excellence of education that we all expect here. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next up we have Lori Brackett. Lori Brackett?
She's gone. She left.
All right. So next we have Jacqueline Perillo.
She's gone too.
All right. Take out.
Good evening. My name is Kay Gallo. Last meeting, we had a wonderful tour like we did this meeting. And unfortunately, Dr. Hardy is not here for me to comment on how nice the tour was. So I will wait until the next time when he's back. But last meeting, it's unfortunate, just like it is tonight. South had another event to go at the same time. So all of South's administration was pulled in two different directions, but we thank them. I thank them for giving us a wonderful tour and I will thank them the next time. Last meeting, it was Mr. Walsh gave us a wonderful tour. Thank you, Mr. Walsh, because being that I had been involved in this district for a long time, the master facility plan took a long time to come to fruition. So this was a wonderful, it's been wonderful to see all these things being done. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Next up is Kim Nizaro.
I sent you all a letter to talk about my concerns with the things that have come up. First, I'm really focused on academic gaps. And during the community conversations, we heard about the MTSS program that's going to be offered on half Wednesdays. I'm wondering why that hasn't been presented to the board. And with ongoing metrics on how we're doing on something like that, we really need to address student gaps. Second, I am intrigued that you continue to approve new courses by adopting the Program of Studies. New courses are really critical. And actually, I would love to hear from the teachers who are proposing these courses instead of people who are maybe not the people who created the courses. My third thing is the information on the new math course. There's a lot of misinformation out. At the PTAC meeting, it was stated that there were 144 students in summer school geometry. Tonight, we found out that was 55. So there were 88 kids in summer school that accelerated their math. My concern is not that we're going to offer a class, but offering a class, algebra and geometry, we're putting 360 days of instruction into 180 days. But that's actually not true because if you listened to the presentation at the last PTAC, you heard that we're not actually teaching a geometry course. We're only teaching geometry content. That content is also covered in the pre-algebra class that's taught at the special ed level or like the algebraic, I don't know what exactly the course is named. So that's kind of a misnomer. So what I would propose is a class, algebra and geometry. Don't double block it, maybe block and a half it, put it period zero, period one. Those kids then would be giving something of themselves. It would slow down how fast we're delivering content because we're asking kids who've never been accelerated in math to double accelerate by putting them in two math classes simultaneously and then calling it honors. I have a huge problem with it being honors because it's going to be counted basically the same as the honors class for kids who already take it, algebra and geometry. So I put together a proposal for you guys. It's in my letter. This class is not offered anywhere at the honors level. It is offered by Naperville 203 at a regular level, but the class isn't honors. And so I think we need to look to the people who are doing it and see how it works because saying that somebody else teaches it at an honors level is misinformation.
Thank you for your comments. Final individual is Michelle Fordova-Tack. Is Michelle?
She's gone too.
She's gone too?
She'll be back.
All right. That is all for audience comments at this point in time. We're going to move on then to Board New Business, 6.1 and 6.2. The first topic here is 6.1, Board Briefs. The board will have a discussion here. Let's try and within that 15-ish minute, then see if we can keep ourselves there. Discuss potential changes to Board Briefs, which is the written summary that is produced for each Board Education meeting. I want to briefly hand it over to member James, who has brought this topic up as a future agenda item at previous meetings for comment that the stars off.
Sure. I first brought this topic up for discussion back via email in January when I saw that Board Briefs really were not inclusive of the entire Board meeting and had made questions of our administration and could that be done? And it was told that it needed to be discussed by the full Board. So hence it became a future agenda item. In my opinion, and I've done a little bit of research on this through other school districts as well, Board Briefs should be representative of the entire meeting rather than kind of repeating what the agenda is and the various talking points and all the items that are walked through on each of the slides. I also would like to see a summary and the topic of Board Member Comments, which are excluded. I mean, these are Board Briefs, not just the meeting. So it should include the full Board. And then also include audience members that address the Board along with the topic. And these, you know, also be cognizant of the fact that these Board Briefs are sent to all students, staff, and parents. And so we need to be clear about what is included in those Board Briefs to that point. So, you know, as I kind of walked through and did some research for this, I looked at some of the other school districts and, you know, majority of them, when I print them out, are anywhere from two to four pages. Ours come out at about seven or eight. So just for comparative, just on brevity, I think a brief, I was looking for them to be a little bit more of a summary. And that's all in one of the poses, part of the discussion.
Sure, I'll give my thoughts first. Thank you for that and for providing the other information in advance. So I think to your topic that you just said about the potentially shortening, you know, doing a little bit more higher level summary of some of the presentations that we have. I know we have now in our Board Briefs links to those presentations. Certainly they're in the Board Docs as well. And provide maybe some higher level bullets for some of those big presentations or agenda topics. I don't think that's a radical suggestion. I think that would, you know, make some sense. You know, we want to make sure we're providing information to, you know, there's that balance of making sure we're providing information. But to your point, maybe not overwhelming information because certainly the presentation can always be read again or we have our live stream. And when it comes to Board Comments or Audience Comments, they are captured, of course, in our minutes. And they're listed out there with names and topics for Audience Comments in the first section, brief summary of the Board Comments in the third section, and topics in the second Audience Comments section. One thing I noticed when looking around neighboring or area or greater Chicago land districts is that it seems to be pretty standard practice that that's where those remain. The Board Briefs themselves that are sent out summarize the business of the district and the Board and avoid the opinion aspects of it, which the Board Comments themselves are. For us, we have it on there as a point to offer comments for the record, but it's, you know, our own little editorial space. And then Audience Comments are Audience Comments, which we do capture, of course, in two places. The minutes, permanent record, and then, of course, in the video livestream. If we're talking about trying to condense and focus on the business of the Board and the business of the district, it would seem that that's what we need to, we want to focus on. And going again by the, you know, five or six districts I took a look at at the high school level, we offer pretty much the same sort of content and that's business content. We might have more of it in some cases. That's, I'm not arguing there, but we're not, we are not alone. In fact, we are operating in, it seems like a normal practice of how we, what we include there in our Board Briefs and the summary of the business of the Board and the district.
So I would agree that I think the Board Briefs should be a high-level summary of the business of the Board. I agree that the Board Briefs should be a high-level summary of the business of the Board and not inclusive of comments from Board Members or the comments that are raised by the community. I think those are obviously available. If people want to go back and look at the meeting at a later date, they can do so. So that's my position there. And I do think there's probably an opportunity to make the Board Brief a little more brief, recognizing that I'm sure there is a bit of a balance between trying to figure out for Chris to determine how much information to include.
So I think I need to help get some clarification. So did you want it overall to be more brief? Okay. What you wanted to include?
I want it to be more brief, but to be inclusive of the entire meeting, not just very specific points. So from the perspective of, you know, I as one Board Member have made several comments. There's no mention of anything that I may have mentioned in there. Not that it needs to be in its entirety, just a simple, "I didn't spoke about blah blah blah," end of story. I'm looking for a summary of the entire meeting that includes all Board Members and the entire meeting, not just a small portion of it.
So I guess now I understand, right? Thought on that is if I'm going to be quoted in a, in a, it would have to be minutes and I would hope to have approval, an approval process for that. And then just to kind of mirror, because I was looking at our minutes of this district of years gone by, that I find in the minutes, like Board Members always have said this and blah blah blah. I think that's probably the more appropriate place to have that. I find the Board Briefs purpose is more to, as another opportunity to present the information that is discussed and the various presentations to the broader community, just another opportunity to summarize and to tag up again the presentations and provide links. But I do think what you're talking about, about what each Board Member says and what the summary of the discussion is and how it went, I think the minutes are probably a better place for that.
I think what I would like to see is, and what I've seen in other districts, is at the very least, just a listing. You know, we have our, we have our community members sign in for our audience communication and just the topic that they spoke about. And a similar thing for Board Comments. You know, Teri Luntall talked about the homecoming game, you know, something like that. Just so that, you know, to Teri's point, if people want to go back and see, but they may not know they want to go back and see until they see what people came out to speak about. So it would just be those additions of audience communication, the name of the community member with the topic, and the similar practice under Board Comments. Very high level.
I guess I'm kind of viewing, we have two documents that come out of our Board meetings. We have our Board Briefs, which it's a restatement by the district of, again, the business that we had in the meeting. And then we have our minutes, which is a summary, not a transcript, but a summary of everything that happened at the meeting, all different topics. Two different spaces, two different documents, obviously. And they both record slightly different things, but they have different purposes. To the point of, I think it's a valid point when you say, you know, these are going out to a very wide community set, right? We have students, we have parents, faculty, community members, you know, press whoever signs up. You know, and I'm thinking back to some of the earlier comments that, you know, during the, during, later in 2020, during some of the more, when things got a little bit heated about COVID, depending on what we're putting in there, for example, on, you know, say the Audience Comments, we had some, it's very nasty, mean-spirited Audience Comments. And how are we, you know, so-and-so talked about protocol. What is the, what are we putting out there for them to go to? Is that germane to the actual business of the Board? Or is that simply part of the, that's the Audience Participation aspect of it that can then be captured on that minutes?
Well, I guess when I read through and I see the topics that came out, that pulled people to the meeting, there's a lot of information that's duplicated in the Board Briefs on the agenda, or triple, whatever the triple version of that word is, and then in triple kit, and then on our minutes. And so I don't see an issue with it listing, Linda Burke came out and commented on summer school and, you know, the referendum project tour. I think that I'm not understanding, I guess, what the resistance to just putting that information.
I am looking at where the impetus kind of comes from because again, when we look across Board Briefs.
Transparency, just providing.
It's in our minutes though. All that is in our, I just.
Absolutely, but.
And it's recorded, so people can go back and listen to the recording.
One of the things I didn't mean to mention, and I apologize if I mentioned it before, you know, I was having a conversation, you know, when putting the agenda, you know, here together and saying we want to add Board Briefs and, you know, we're going to be talking about livestreaming and recording a minute. Kind of been having those two thoughts in mind. I brought that idea to Superintendent Prentice and I know it's been mentioned to Keith Botwold. Within whether this is in our minutes or probably more of our minutes as we figure out from a time code standpoint, but to help people zero in more on some of our, the areas where they may want to listen. With our livestream, you know, sometimes we might have a five and a half hour livestream that someone's going to have to scrub through to try and get to the exact piece that they want. But in, as we're going through and taking a look at, at kind of that transparency aspect of saying, well, if you want to find this topic, here is the time code. It's at hour, you know, hour two, you know, minute 17, you know, go there and you're going to get, you're going to get that. As something else that we can add in as we're looking through this. Again, I don't know, you know, how, if we can add it on to the briefs. I know like for myself, for example, I keep, the Board Video is ongoing here throughout the meeting to keep track of, making sure it's actually functioning. But. But as an additional thing that we can do so that for the summer school report, you know, tonight, or in some of, again, some of our much longer meetings, we are providing a better, quicker way for people to get to those, you know, to those agenda topics for like the big kind of important ones. Because the business of the Board is the Program of Studies. It's the liaison reports, the good news, it's the Board, the summer school report, it's the consent agenda and action items. And, you know, those things that are, they're decisional, if you will. And when I, again, in preparation for this and looking at other examples of Board Briefs, that's exactly what's on them. And they are summarizing the business of the district, not some of the, what could be considered almost more directional in the editorial commentary, either of individual Board Members or community members. And so that's where I'm thinking because we are capturing all of them being perfectly transparent on our minutes, which are public, they are not private, in exactly that same fashion.
So the Board Briefs come out the next day, typically by noon. The minutes, there's a delay, sometimes by a month. So this would be a way to get that information.
The information.
Just a summary of who's booked. I mean, some districts I've seen, you know, include more detail on communications from community members.
So for me, this is not, and I don't want this to be postured as an issue of transparency. It's a, in my opinion, an issue of appropriateness of where, what goes where, what information goes where. Our Board Briefs are another opportunity to provide to the public for anyone who is receiving this email in our district, the business of the Board. It's really not the appropriate place to put our individual opinions because we work as one Board and we support the entire district as one Board. And it is our duty to inform the public of what the business is that we discuss. Our minutes. Our minutes are the perfect place and, and our recording secretary has taken wonderful minutes through the years and it is, we go through an approval process and then they're posted appropriately to our board briefs, I mean, that's, sorry, to the board docs. That's the appropriate place to have where the individual discussion points may be. I find board briefs another opportunity to get information to the public of what happens at the district, what is going on in the district, not necessarily where the different opinions lay. I think that we all know sometimes it takes an opportunity three times, like, you know, it will take three times if here somebody will, will, will find the right way to reach an individual or a family to get the information to them that we're hoping that they'll have and they can take away and apply to whatever their own individual situation is.
So that's, so the business of the board is also listening to the community members. So perhaps I see your point on board member comments, but I still think we can reflect the comments that we're hearing from the community in board briefs. But then to your point too, I mean, we, we get a summary of the president. I mean, so, you know, in hypothetically, no more power than any, on the other board member. So we're still getting some individual board member.
Well, the president does have access to the attorneys that we don't have.
Well, and so I'm just saying, I, I see Cynthia's point, but I would still argue that the community members should at least be listed with a very just brief reference of the topic.
So we, we, you know, we, we, earlier we were hearing comps to other districts. And perhaps it's worthwhile to, you know, reach out to others and see exactly what they do. And whether we do or don't do that, that's a decision we can make. If we make a bullet point that John Smith got and spoke about a basketball performance or a particular incident. But really what we're here for with respect to board briefs, it relates to the September 22nd agenda item 6.1, access to district records. And I'll share with you part of the email that I sent the board as soon as I woke up the next day, which said, "Good afternoon." Maybe I sent it after lunch. Board briefs are intended to give a recap of discussion and action that may or may not be taken at a board meeting and resulting discussion. Today's board briefs do a very poor, inaccurate, and if nothing else, incomplete job of fulfilling their intention as it relates to the discussions surrounding agenda item 6.1 at last night's regular action meeting with the board event. This is a problem and has been for quite some time. Crafting a narrative to suit one's interests is what your audience reads is deceitful and runs counter to your charge of transparency. I'm a conduit to the community that I represent and will not tolerate the direction given to drive such inaccurate reporting. To wit, board briefs out the next day. The conversation was focused primarily on the section of the policy that deals with the preservation of public records and if and how it applies to text messages. It goes on to talk about solutions, including making revisions to the district's policy and/or administrative procedures. A summary of that meeting does not include the resistance to policy change made by three board members because there is no need for a policy change because it's embedded in policy. In fact, it's state law. So when I say, and Eric, you maintain this is supposed to be a summary of board business, a summary of board business is exactly that, a comprehensive, high level, brief summary that the board had discussion, albeit not necessarily in alignment on how exactly they move forward. Instead, it crafts a narrative that does not include some of the more robust discussion as it relates to some of the details of agenda item 6.1. The board, the board briefs need to be accurate and comprehensive and they simply were not.
This board has had differences of opinion on a number of agenda items. And I'm talking about this, the 21 board, going back in time too, there have been disagreements. The, the board briefs themselves are not summaries of our disagreements. They are not rehashing the conversation back and forth. It's a high level. If someone wants to hear us bicker back and forth, they can do so by going to the live stream. If they want to see the, the, the summary, a more detailed summary of the conversation, they have access to the minutes. It would be inappropriate to use the board briefs to somehow try to either relitigate or share what almost would be considered dirty laundry. Here are people arguing amongst each other. Here it is. It's a, it's a high level summary. We talked about these topics. We had a conversation, talked about solutions and so forth. Right, that's, that's.
Talked about solutions that only are agreed upon by some, but not all of the board.
Oh, my, okay.
We have not agreed to anything.
Correct.
So therefore.
But that maintenance, that maintenance is not made in a board.
There was no action taken?
Correct.
With that subject?
You've spoken, you've spoken about 66% of the time so far in this 15 minute segment, which is now 30. Let me just read this to you. There was also discussion about solutions for addressing the questions that were raised about the preservation of records and text messages. These solutions included making revisions to district policy and/or administrative procedures. That's only the opinion of some board members, not all. So this does not accurately and comprehensively represent what happened and transpired depending on who's crafting that narrative, right?
No.
It's not a summary whatsoever. So Debbie and Peggy took a more polite route to maintain it needs to be more detailed. This is a false narrative in the board.
Are you speaking for Debbie and Peggy now?
And that is not a false narrative.
Relative to the comments that you just made.
If you're talking about taking a polite route, certainly no, this is not a very polite route that you're taking right now. You're insulting our Director of Communication by calling him deceitful. This is the second time you've gone after a member of our administration and, and called them a liar.
I'm not calling anyone a liar.
No, you called them deceit. What is deceit? Deceit is a lie.
Eric, you're supposed to be a leader.
I, I, I am and so are you. And what are you doing in your leadership position you're taking and use it to attack members of our administration?
I'm attacking, I'm attacking nobody.
You just read an email.
Although I could argue you're attacking me. Let me finish because you had the floor most of the evening. I'm simply maintaining it's not comprehensive at all.
It is not a transcript of our meetings. We have minutes, recordings, and we have briefs. Briefs. We're, the, the purpose of this was to make it briefer, not to somehow add in editorializing by individual.
I would ask Board Member James to clarify what she said. I think she also included a more accurate summary. Is that correct? Board Member James, I don't want to put words in your mouth.
I, I did suggest that it would be brief and allow for links to the appropriate presentations so that people have access to that same information, the summary of each of those sections. And then also include something, a summary or in one line, a topic about what was discussed by various board members and/or community members.
And you just, and Peggy, I can quote you because you said something along the lines of Peggy James said. Now, I don't think you need to say Peggy James said, but to not include any alternative or oppositional narrative is incomplete.
I just happen to disagree with that philosophy of what you go into a board brief. And again, I think our entire, most of our community has asked us to work as a unit as opposed to finding ways to individualize how we look at opinions to come to some sort of compromise, some sort of like patient way to work with each other. I will say that I don't find, oh, no, I'm not going to say that. But I will say that one of the places that is the productive place to talk about how you feel that it would be is at the IASV retreat that we all do. So that, that is an appropriate place to discuss it as well. Social media is not an appropriate place to discuss it. But, you know, my opinion is that board briefs is information for the community to have of the business of the board, not as a space for us to, to further divide who said what, who said what, when, whose opinion was what. I guess I can support if, if everybody else, you know, to the, to your point about having community members, because that's in our minutes, if, if others find it important and have like a one line of who came and what they spoke about, I can support that. I, I think that's a valid.
I mean, I can speak to why, like, I think it's helpful because if I see, and I'm not going to use District Davy 6 as an example because this does exist in my particular feeder district. If I see that somebody came out and spoke on a topic, it may not be a topic I knew I maybe should take interest in, pay attention to, or go listen to the minutes or follow up on. And I can think of a handful of topics over the years that are not divisive topics, that are not antagonistic topics, but that are topics that are informational for community members, informational for parents, and that may be how it gets on some of these radar. It's going in our minutes, but it's going in our minutes. Our minutes have to come to us as a draft, then they have to get approved, then they get posted. And so if it's a timely topic, I think, you know, just a list of who came and spoke and just the topic that they spoke about, and then if somebody wants to go look at it, they can watch the video, they can reach out to their building principal, and it gives them an idea of what was said.
And I'll be honest, I didn't expect this to be a large conversation or something that would be of any consequence. To me, board briefs are literally that, a summary of the board meeting. So that's, that's all the request was, to look into, how can we summarize it better?
So it sounds like there's an agreement on how, or direction to the board to, from the board, to administration to, to use the phrase, you know, summarize it better, tighter, in a shorter capacity. Something that maybe board members can think about when it comes to audience comments. In our audience, in our audience comment section of the minutes, we have the, the name of the individual who spoke. And then we have, it says you have the topic. This information will be used to record your comments in the meeting minutes. And so it's, it's clearly saying this is for the meeting minutes and what they're talking about. If we start putting individual community members' names in the board, the board briefs that go out to so many people, it is entirely possible that some of those individuals may not want their name. They might be fine to sit here and say something, but again, it might take people a long time to go through a, a, an agenda item. Like to your point, it's a month and change or whatever it is to get those minutes out there. But, and that, and very few people are clicking on the minutes or going to the, to the video archive. But the board briefs go out to thousands of people at any, any given, after any given board meeting. And so to say to the community members, if you speak here, we're going to tell everybody your name and what you spoke about, a summary of what you spoke about. Part of me also thinks, is that going to have less people in those chairs? Or are people going to put in here on the comments something that perhaps is not something we want to send out to 4,000 or students plus parents plus community members and et cetera? Because whatever we're deciding on doing or asking the administration, because we don't own this process. The administration owns the board briefs process, not us. We have to think about what we're actually putting in the board briefs. And if we're putting community members' names in there, I know we talked about this at FOIA, that now we are releasing those at FOIA. But this is just saying, hey, this person talked about, well, whatever the topic might be. But if going forward, we then say, put the topic you want again, not everybody is necessarily going to want all of that blasted out to the community. And I'd ask that to be a consideration too in thinking about what exactly we're putting into a summary of the board's business.
That is, that's a fair consideration. I didn't think about that, of who wants their name and their topic. Some people come in really personal.
Well, the patch will quote people's name as we speak all the time. Don't they relinquish that right and say they take the mic?
This is a public meeting, this is a public meeting, right? That, that can happen. And the patch is allowed to go in there and quote whatever they want. People may not like it and depending on how they use it, they may think they're, you know, that they're being slandered or libel even though it's, it's used there. But we're not the press. That's, that's not our concern, what comes after that. What, who uses or abuses what we have in our, in our board livestream video? That, we would hope people are always good actors with that, but, you know, if people are, are being highlighted or called out for that, again, that's, that's the press. They, they have the ability to do those and all.
And then what if we have students coming through?
So perhaps you could amend your spreadsheet where they sign in and say, my name's Jeff Waters, I'm talking about the football game. And yes or no, you want your name quoted on board briefs?
We don't ask them that for the minutes.
Yeah, well, we do say it though. We say that you're, you're going to be a cop in the minutes. So we, we tell them they're going to be in the minutes.
But it sounds like we're interested in being accommodating in an attempt to distribute their comments. You can say, you want your name quoted or not? You talked about football, Mr. Waters, you want your name to accompany that?
But at that point in time, then we're also not summarizing the meeting in the board briefs. We're saying, these people are okay with their opinions being blasted out. These people you'll find in, in the minutes. And that's still not a summary of the meeting. It's, it's also not the business of, of the board or the district. The business of the board is to listen to people. These meetings are meetings of the board for the business of the board. Component to that might be listening, but what we're just, what we're doing and deciding on, it's elsewhere in the agenda, it's the other pieces of, the educational aspects, the presentations, the kind of consent agenda, the action items. I, I don't see why, I see, I don't see this as a, as a great add to our board briefs. And again, going through Stevenson 125, Nutrier 99, 113, 220, Elmhurst 205, Naperville 203, 211. There are two others I looked at, LT and 181. LT and 181 are the only ones that have any reference to audience comments. All of the others completely bypass those, anonymize anything from a, a board perspective. And some of those don't even have, have president's reports that I haven't mentioned in there. As, I mean, the president is the spokesperson for the board. And so is ideally speaking with one voice and is not using the president's report for editorializing. I know that I've certainly tried not to do that. I know Terry didn't do that. You know, past presidents have not done that either because it's, you know, I, I restrain myself in previous times where I, I felt the need to editorialize and criticize because I could have done it in board comments. I chose just not to entirely. It's not the response, not, it's not right of me to use the board president's report to present my individual opinion. Purely editorialized individual opinion.
Is, ooh, how is this like? I don't know if this is getting in the weeds or not, but really just trying to create a successful solution here. If we're talking about interesting topics that other community members might be interested in, does it make sense just to list the topics as opposed to the name? Because I, I do agree the name creates.
That's a very interesting compromise. To say that we had audience communication that covered the following topics. Because in our minutes to, to that, actually, as I mentioned before, the second audience discussion, because people don't sign up for it, because they don't say their name and I'm going to be in the minutes, we just record the topics. And so if we had a section in our, our board briefs that talked about audience comments and let's say we had the following topics discussed, I would say that we'd want to make sure, and I can go and, you know, we can put this in the, in the script and, and stuff so people know when they, when they sign up to speak, that the topic that they write, you know, we'll, we'll include it, but if, if they leave a blank, we'll try our best to summarize it. But if they want that topic to be in very brief, you know, accurately described, that they're going to, you know, make sure to, to jot that down. That, that seems like an easy way to, to do it without worrying about privacy concerns. But saying to the point that Member Levendell was making, if there's a topic that jumps to the top that may be of greater interest, why not have it there? What is everybody's thoughts on that? I see a nod, you have, of course, had it. Thoughts, Terry? Well, so there's a little bit of additional direction there. So board briefs, thanks for tomorrow. But, you know, maybe as we move into, you know, we can, you know, say whether it's on the second of October or in November, December, they can begin a process here of, you know, I think it's a procedure to do that. So then moving on to the 6.2 live streaming and recording board committee meetings. So talking about the possibility of live streaming or recording, not, the board meetings, of course, are already, but the individual board committee meetings, not superintendent committee meetings. Because again, there are, we do have some of those, like the, the secondary instructional schedules, Portrait of a Graduate, so these are superintendent committees. These are not board level committees. Those are not open to the public. Those are not going to be live streamed or recorded. I'll turn it over to Member Levendell. You brought up as a future agenda item.
Yeah, I would, I would like to see the board committee meetings recorded so that board members that can't attend have the ability to go back and watch them. I've attended a lot of committee meetings for committees that I'm not on and find it to be very informative and helpful. Mainly, I, you know, I attended a lot of the policy committee meetings over the past, since last winter. And prior to being a board member, you were able to attend committee meetings at the time because of COVID and watch them virtually, mainly finance, HR, et cetera. And so obviously that practice stopped when we transitioned out of some of the governor's orders. But I think it would be useful to have these meetings. It would be great if they could be live streamed, but if not, then recorded so that other board members could go back and watch and community members could have access to watching them as well. I believe that even prior to COVID, the special facilities committee was recorded. So. So, if I'm correct, it's not without precedent. I think it would be helpful.
So, so I've thought about this for a bit, and I've also talked to someone I know on a neighboring board, and they do not do those. They do not livestream or record the board committee meetings. And so I think that maintaining our current practice is most appropriate.
I think it was member Hurstman that had stated, and she's not here to defend herself, but had stated that attending committee meetings was a way, that when she was a newer board member, that she learned a lot attending other committee meetings. And so, and I do, I think that it's extremely valuable, especially in certain topics that you want to learn more about, to attend the committee meeting. Because some of the conversations, some that come to the board table are a little more high level. So I think it would be a good practice.
And, and I've also found, most of the work is really done at the committee level. So most of the deep dive in and information can be found at the committee level meetings. So by the time, as you mentioned, it gets to the board table, a lot of decisions have been made, and you don't understand the history behind some of those questions. The ability to go back and to review and to see those meetings is, would be extremely helpful. My opinion.
Yeah, I only serve on two committee meetings. Some board members serve on more. I think one serves on six. And even the one that serves on six maintains it's beneficial to get an opportunity to view some of these things. I don't, not that anyone supported livestream, but simply that it's beneficial to community members and young board members like myself, who are interested in learning more about, could be self, could be PTAC, et cetera, whatever. Or it can't be self, because that's a super thing. But I think it would be quite valuable for leadership purposes in the future, both for community members and for board members, to see those things livestreamed.
I guess I'm, you know, I know we have done them in the past. I know that, I guess that there are technical constraints to setting up a recording and setting up a livestream.
I can tell you, from a technology perspective, we're always stressed for resources. But we could show people how to record the voice recorder or something, using some of these E-meet speakers that we had from the pandemic setting up in the rooms, and just be a little training with whoever facility pays the committee. And then we can post it on the video and your archive. We want to do something like that. Going the route of livestream is a little more detailed, fooling the equipment around and having resources available for troubleshooting, make that all work.
Especially during the school day.
Absolutely.
But the, just recording them, would it be, it would just be audio recording? I mean, the, the materials for the committee are typically posted.
They're mostly, then they add the content.
They are, and that was when I used to view them, prior to being a board member, a frustration, because you couldn't see the slides. But what about, like, just, I mean, they were recorded through, like, WebEx, I think. Could, could it, like, with a screen share type of thing? Could it be something like that, or no?
Possibly do something like that, but I don't know the details of any documents that are put into there.
There's a lot on security, so for some of those, that's why they're in admin contact?
Correct.
The facilities kind of totally torn back to floor plans, I think, so that's why it wasn't recorded.
One of the things that I, I have heard, asking a little bit around, I mean, aside from, as from what you talked to, and similar to information that I saw, it's not standard practice for board committee meetings. And the reasoning behind that's, that's been shared with me is that those committee meetings tend to be a working session, where they can hash out ideas in a different space. While they are public meetings, if people can come to attend, oftentimes, the, to your point, tell you, there's a lot of, you know, kind of sausage being made, kind of going through a lot of different permutations, a lot of different questions. But sometimes the questions that are asked, or the conversation that's had, again, what's been shared, can be considered freer than if it was being a, a recorded, or certainly a livestream, which, there were a lot of pushback against livestreaming. We had to do it because of COVID. And then as Board 7-0, we voted to rescind that 2/230 back in July of last year, to undo the recording and the livestream, which was, yeah, captured via WebEx, unless we're here where we certainly have the camera that we could use. But I do see a benefit, I mean, I see a benefit to keeping at least some of those, those committee meetings, especially ones that touch on more sensitive subjects, such as those that are dealing with our employees and our students. I'm thinking of HR, I'm thinking of PTAC, the Employee Benefits Committee. You know, these ones are a little bit more, sometimes can be more delicate, they're public, and we have to have the conversations in public. But the, how that conversation is held, you know, I wouldn't want to, again, constrain that or, or make people clam up if they feel like it's, there's a different kind of locus on them during those, again, kind of working session committees. There are other committees, though, the point, the special facilities. You know, we have had different recording in the past, or livestreaming of those. And I could see a benefit, certainly right now, as we are working through big referendum projects, as we're working through the levy, and what the impact of that is going to be. So looking at facilities, looking at finance as two of those where, you know, we get one of those little pucks that we see, you know, used there, we're plugging it into a little hand recorder, and we're making the recording of those, kind of, those meetings. Almost in a way, not getting to a, again, that staff and student level, those tend to be a different kind of quality or type of conversation that's had there. And maybe even, maybe even policy, because again, usually that's, that's a high-low, those are high-level topics because it's policy, it's that overarching policy. And there can be a benefit, I can't speak for member Hurstman. She did share her comments on, on livestreaming. She's not a fan of, of livestreaming or recording of the committee meetings, because she prefers the, the working committee aspect of it. You know, just having that as, as a freer space, public meeting, but not, not recorded. But to the point of having some of these meetings, some of what's happened there, there's a little bit more of kind of a broader district or community impact and consequence. And so, I mean, I, I could get on board with recording, not livestreaming, but again, you know, having a recording of, at the very least, I'd say, facilities and finance for right now, while we're working through the referendum, certainly. And then, you know, every, you know, we're all kind of focusing on finance, even though, you know, we've always had a low attendance at finance. No matter how important it is, people tend to wait until it's at the board table to, to listen to what's being said there. But to have those offered, I, I think those, again, those were two that I was thinking of specifically, as ones that we could record.
I would agree with you that PTAC is much more of a working session, a lot of pre-decision. Although I, I don't think it would be beneficial to have a, definitely a livestream. It serves a, I mean, there's a lot of ideas that are thrown around and great discussions that's being had for PTAC. I guess I was also thinking about how the structure of committees has changed. Actually, under Superintendent Prentice, she's made it much more of a regular cadence. We use it completely, we use, the committees are being used in a different way as well. So I guess definitely something to put into consideration on whether or not they served a purpose that they did prior when they were livestreaming all the time. And I do think, I do believe there have been certain committees that have had more frequent livestreaming. Finance comes to mind, than others, so.
At one point, the finance committee was the full board.
Yeah, it took a board, that's why.
Some of these were committees as a whole in the past that then have, have shrugged down.
As well as facilities.
Mm-hmm, right. In one under one, so. But they're not committees as a whole, they're not governed by the same, same policy there.
And again, you know, I don't want this to be thrown into the bucket of transparency. It's really that committee work and the structure of the committees has been really overhauled to be a very productive place to grow ideas in innovative ways and get feedback, or maybe that hadn't happened in the past because of the regular cadence and the, and the way that it was structured now.
I just, I mean, from my perspective, the committees are open meetings, the committee meetings are open meetings. There are some that would be more difficult than others to record. For example, PTAC, obviously, but the main presentation shouldn't be a problem. And the main, this, you know, starting point, kickoff point. I also feel that regardless of what the topics are and the like, these are open meetings. And they should, you know, the, the presentations, the discussion shouldn't be different if it's recorded or not recorded. It should be the same discussion in one way or the other, in my opinion. I mean, if we're working through questions and we're asking questions and we're coming up with ideas and solutions, I mean, that is what a committee meeting does. So understanding that, I think that would be an appropriate area in order to have that recorded.
Yeah, I think it's different when you have a camera on you, versus when you're, even if other people can be in the room with you and having a conversation, then either that camera's going, there's recording going, that you're, the content of, of the meeting can be cut out and spliced. I mean, there's been, well, I won't go down, down there, but the, the people operate differently when they're being recorded than they do when they're not. Maybe the content of the conversation should be the same, but it may not be. You know, and that's, I think should be a consideration. Another consideration is, again, it is broadly, like, super majority, like, districts in Illinois, not just districts in DuPage, or, you know, around, certainly around us, there's only, you know, maybe one that records any sort of committee meetings. It seems to be standard practice that these working committee meetings are not recorded. That, that tends to be the, the policy of them. And I'm, I'm looking for a reason why we should. Again, I can see a reason why maybe, especially in these times right now, we have a big referendum that we're working through at these facilities projects. And then the financial issues are becoming far, in a far sharper focus. So recording those sessions makes sense, even if it deviates from the norm. It still, it still does seem to, to make some measure of sense to offer that to, whether it's other board members or broadly the community, to give them the ability to, to tap back into that. I mean, topics of finance can be very complex, and they are summarized in a, you know, in a briefer session when we have our finance committee reports. So, again, that, that's where I'm on that. And I'm, I don't know if there's anyone that necessarily, does anyone else agree with that? Or are we just kind of at impasse where we have six different voices and we don't really know? So then we can just move on and consent agenda.
Can I offer this one, if you mind, if I can indulge me? I think, to your point, these committees are working committees, and, you know, there are some times where I'm, I, I'll speak for me, you might want to bring an idea that maybe isn't fully vetted, but I just want to kind of talk it out. I don't want to look foolish in front of the camera later on, if somebody clips me and said, look what the superintendent HR is talking about. So I'm going to probably approach the committee meetings a little bit more conservatively and scripted than I would if it were a working committee where I felt, you know, again, not trained, you want to come and listen, that's fine. But to be recorded, to be put on Facebook, to be sent out in this community, I'm not interested in doing that. And it will change what I do personally, I will just say that. I'm not going to speak for anybody else, but that's, that is the concern I personally would have. See, these things happen. They're recorded, and they're sent out, and, and I'm not interested in looking foolish. Like Principal Walsh.
Well, I think, I think to that point, though, they are, they are being recorded a lot of times. And so, you know, the district would then have that, you know, official copy of the video that would then be posted, so people could look at it. But I, I don't sense that we have consensus on this.
I'm, I'm not hearing consensus for any ideas before. So at the moment, we're going to table this and move on to the consent agenda. If there's additional ideas that board members want to circulate amongst each other, individual, OMA-approved basis, we can do that. But for right now, we're going to move on to 7.1, the consent agenda, which can, the consent agenda items consist of items, minutes, business affairs, personnel, policies, contract renewals, and administrative tasks that are routine in nature, but that have been discussed with the board and are now presented for approval. Any item may be pulled from the consent agenda for further discussion and consideration. All items on the consent agenda are approved with a single motion unless removed for the roll call vote. Does any board member wish to remove an item from consent for a separate vote? Hearing none, may I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda?
So moved, Leventhal.
Second, James. Motion, Leventhal, second, James.
Member how?
Aye.
Member, uh, member Walker?
Aye.
Member Hanson?
Aye.
Member James?
Aye.
Member Leventhal?
Aye.
Member Waters?
Aye.
Thank you. Consent passed. Moving on now to the board president's report. There's one thing we have from a schedule of, of committee meetings. We have a policy meeting, policy committee meeting posted on Monday, November 7th now. Not posted, I should say. But that will be held on, on Monday, on November 7th, where there hadn't been one previously. The October policy on the 3rd was, was canceled. And so there'll be topics coming back to policy, or coming to policy first at that point in time, if they haven't come to the board prior. I want to thank the Principal Walsh, Superintendent Prentice, Director of Security Kevin Simpson, building the district leadership team for their cool and steady hand at the event, as it's been termed, that we had at Hinsdale Central a short time ago. That certainly wasn't, I imagine, for, you know, for me, without having a student in either of the buildings, a, a tense period of time. And I can only imagine, for those of you who had students, how you must have felt. I want to thank the, the local, our aerial law enforcement for their speedy response, for their partnership and, and working with us in this. I'm going to circle back to, though, to Kevin Simpson, Superintendent and, and leadership, and say, though, once more, aside from thank you for how you handled it on the day, thank you all for, and please extend this to Kevin, the planning that was put in to be at a place where everything went so smoothly, where there wasn't a chaotic event, where there wasn't a freezing, or anything like that, where there was, there were steps and there was action taken, there was a structure, it was followed. And, you know, thank heavens it was just, I don't want to say for naught, because you want to treat everything like that as it should be treated, as it was. But thank heavens it was for naught. I want to thank members Leventhal, Walker, James, Hurstman, and Hanson for joining me, Superintendent Prentice and Deb Kudrowski last week with Patrick Allen, a director of ISB, for our ISB closed session and self-evaluation. It was a, I think it was a productive time, not swinging for the fences, but singles are still important in the game of baseball. And I, you know, thank you for taking the time on that, that night, where we met for, you know, about two and a half or three-ish hours or so. It was a, again, I thought it was a productive session. And it's always good to put in the work for, you know, for our benefit, for the district's benefit. You know, we're here for the kids, and we expect them to do, do their homework and do their work. And so too should we, to make sure we, we can operate in as best a capacity as we can. I'm going to move on to future agenda items at this point in time. Does any board member have any requests for a future agenda item? Okay, hearing none, we have a time now on our, our schedule for board member comments. This section of the agenda is not for deliberation, but it may be used by board members to offer comments for the record. Are there any board members who wish to offer their comments, with your 10 minutes, up to a total of 30 for all comments?
You heard, you said everything I was going to say, so, you know, I'll be brief. I, I got informed of the event last Wednesday, eight days ago, when I was at work, and I, I got informed at the event last Wednesday, eight days ago, when I was at work. And as much as I was concerned for the event, I knew we could not have been in better hands. So Principal Walsh, Tammy Prentice, Superintendent Prentice, and also certainly Kevin Simpson and all the other faculty and staff that would have been involved, not to mention the local law enforcement. Honestly, you know, relative to, it's going to happen anywhere and it did happen here, I knew we could not have been in better hands. So it was comforting to know what work you guys have done long before, you know, I was elected to the board as, as administrators and faculty and staff and what Kevin Simpson and his crew did. We were in great hands and I thank you guys for your efforts.
With no additional board comments, we'll now move to our second audience comments section. We'll, we'll hear comments from members of the public for up to three minutes. Again, we are still operating under our board protocols and policy 2-230. If you have a comment, please step to the microphone, address yourself, and we'll have your two minutes.
Kim Notaro, again. I want you guys to look at the data, the two classes, the things that we're talking about this evening, the earned honors credit and the new algebra and geometry honors class for freshmen. Those are going to be serving the population, which are at grade level. Remember when we get the results from the SAT, that 71% of that group are not meeting state standards in mathematics and 61% are not meeting state standards in English. What are we doing to help close the gaps? Those are huge numbers for kids at grade level that are not meeting state standards. So I really, really urge you to step back from the proposals. I urge you to look at, maybe it's a pathway to honors. And give it a .5 GPA bump instead of the full honors bump. I really think we do need honors English classes that aren't AP. You talk about how the earned honors, it's, they might not do the first three assignments. Well, I know in AP Lit and AP Line, there were six grades. If you didn't do the first three, you miss hatched the content. So how are we giving honors credit at the same level as those kids in the AP for somebody who is doing, you know, it would be considered half the work in an AP class? So I really urge you to look at the decisions that are being made and to look at the data. Because it's great to accelerate people. I'm 100% behind accelerating, especially in mathematics for those that are late bloomers. But there's no way you can do it in a single period and teach the content. Algebra and geometry are the language of STEM. A child that doesn't have a solid foundation in those and trigonometry, that's actually your key indicator of a child that's going to do well in calculus or STEM in college and beyond. It's not having taken a high school calculus class. The key indicators are taking algebra that's full, geometry that's full, trigonometry that's full. It isn't taking AP Calc. That's not the key indicator for success moving into the STEM field in college. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Does any audience, additional audience members wish to offer comments?
Hi, yes, thank you. I'm Melissa Salhaw Mark. And I am just actually going to comment on audience, audience comments. Cynthia, I wanted to say thank you. I thought that was a good compromise on your board brief idea to list the topic of public comment that the audience had without the person's name. You seem to all kind of agree on that. And however, Eric, I was just wondering, you said that you thought that if people knew their names were going to be listed by their topic, maybe the seats out there being printed would not be filled. However, I wonder if really you are more afraid that the seats would be more filled, where we often see what is going on in the board. With that, because, and I'm relating that to why were the audience comments for this, this evening's meeting moved to after the academic curriculum presentation by Dr. Kavina or the others? I'm just wondering, because his presentation, which was fine, he was slotted for that time, for that presentation and, and the others with him, was 105 minutes. And then, as you saw, when you called for the audience comments for the people that had signed up, a few of the people had already left. My question is, which, I understand the questions aren't answered, was this your intent? Is your intent to try to get to the, the community members to leave, to not comment because you're kind of tired of listening to us in areas that we disagree with you? So I think that when you've set a precedent, that audience comments are at the beginning, it's a little confusing to the audience why they've been moved to over an hour later.
So actually, Lisa, I will just offer a brief comment on that. Because it does, we, I don't know what time you got to the meeting tonight, but there was an announcement there at, very close to the beginning, that we were moving some sections of the, the program of studies was moving earlier, and the good news earlier in the agenda, because some of those who were presenting were actually going to the Horace Academic Scholar Program down the hall, basically. And now that was thrown off a little bit because we had a fire drill. So we were outside for a little bit, so it actually turned out that we lost them anyway to, to the program. But, so that, just so you understand, again, I don't know what time you, you got there, if it was before or after the fire drill.
Can I just add, that was also in the board agenda when it was posted on 2.1?
It is in 2.1. So, just as an explanation there, as a point of clarification, I don't, I didn't know what you had got here. Any additional comments?
Sorry, I, I will be brief. I, I'm thrilled with the swimming pools. I devoted my allotment of one letter to the editor during the referendum season to advocating for the pools. Now, I'm an academic that wouldn't be caught dead in a pool. But to me, the universal public school swimming is a life or death, social justice issue. And, and I have a story on that, we'll wait for another time. But I think that should always come up whenever we talk about how wonderful it is to have pools that are not going to break down and that, that are here for the community. Because that's, that's the most important reason. And I'm told by students that there are always kids who come in not knowing how to swim, but they will know how to swim. This, it's not, it's not as bad as it was in my youth, but it's still a major social justice issue. Next, I have to, I do respectfully disagree with Kim on one thing. I do think that senior year of high school calculus is extremely important for college, success in college STEM and to going on to post STEM such as medical school. And so I fully understand why late bloomers want to move ahead a year so that they can take calculus senior year. I am increasingly concerned that a ninth grade combo course for kids who've been at grade level up to ninth grade, a one-hour combo, combo course will not work for all students and should not be forced on kids at the expense of the summer school option, or of doubling up. Because summer school allows a kid to fully focus on one thing. I think that kids who've been at grade level math need a gentler transition. And I totally understand the desire of families and kids to accelerate if they're late bloomers and end up in senior year calculus. This will make a huge difference. The $600 will pale compared to the expense of repeating a college course or taking a post back, which is, the last I looked is, are, they're $60,000 a year for two years. And there's still no guarantee. Anyway, thank you for your patience. I know it's late.
Can I add something? Because what I said about education came actually from a study at Harvard.
Kim, if you want to talk to Linda after the board meeting, you're more than welcome to have a conversation.
It's from a study at Harvard.
Okay, it's okay. You can talk after the conference.
Oh, Kim, I said respectfully.
Aye.
Respectfully.
Respectfully, if we can continue that conversation afterwards.
Yeah.
Are there any other individuals in the audience who wish to comment? Hearing none, may I have a motion and a second to adjourn the meeting?
So moved. Second, Walker.
Motion Hanson, second Walker. All those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, say nay. Meeting is adjourned at 9:50 PM.